I got this frantic call from Chris Johnson, our general counsel at that time, and he made it clear that all meetings had to be open, even the search committee meetings. Now, that wasn't easy for either the candidates or for the members of the search committee, but we did it because we didn't want to be in violation of the Open Meetings Act. Another concern I've had is the use of email and how that influences board members. And finally, I shared our colleague Mary Kucharek's concern regarding how we go into closed session and what is required. So basically, I've asked our general counsel to provide us an update and educate us and clarify what we can do and what we can't do. So Andrew, welcome.
Can you hear me? Okay.
Can you hear in the back?
Hello? All right, there we go. So do I have to keep it here?
No way. I saw it.
So, the Open Meetings Act is something that's special to my heart. Several years ago, I helped rewrite the Open Meetings Act handbook on behalf of the Michigan Municipal Risk Management Authority. And for most of the last decade, I've been going around the state and giving presentations such as this to various boards and elected officials, just kind of giving them an update on this. That's one of the first times Chris and I met was doing these presentations together on Freedom of Information Act and other things like that. Oh, the Open Meetings Act. A brief overview. What the Open Meetings Act requires is that all decisions of a public body be made at a meeting that is open to the public with very few exceptions. And in order to make sure that you understand that you have to do that, the act explicitly provides for both civil and criminal penalties if you violate. The purpose is to promote government openness by providing greater public access and input into the government decision-making process. So this act was enacted in 1976. It went into effect in 1977. It was part of a whole group of laws that were going across the country called sunshine laws. They were somewhat a direct response to the previous presidential administration and what people perceived as a lack of openness. So in Michigan, that was the Open Meetings Act and the Freedom of Information Act that were enacted in order to try to open up the doors so people could see how the sausage was made. So what is a public body? Well, the statute has a very convoluted definition, as you can see right there. But the short version of what that is, there's three different types of public bodies. A state or local legislative or governing body, which includes boards and commissions and their subcommittees, that have by statute, charter, ordinance, or some other rule the ability to exercise governmental or proprietary functions. Or a lesssee of such a body performing an essential public purpose pursuant to that lease agreement. Or the board of a nonprofit corporation formed under the Home Rule Cities Act. We're only concerned here with that first definition, the board, commission, committee, subcommittee, or other council empowered by state statute or other law. We are covered because we know that the mental health code, particularly sections 204 and 205, give us the authority to create the authority that we are. So we are, as a board, subject to the Open Meetings Act. Not just the board, it's any committee of the board that is deliberating toward or rendering a decision on public policy. If that committee has authority to make decisions, it is absolutely governed and subject to the Open Meetings Act. If that committee is deliberating towards a final decision, it's open to the, or subject to the Open Meetings Act. It's always safest to be open. Oh, the Open Meetings Act, though, does not apply if you purely have a non-policy-making subcommittee that only issues resolutions, tributes, memorials, non-binding authority, not something that really impacts the public fisc or otherwise creates any policy. And it also doesn't include a purely advisory committee that consists of less than a quorum of the entire board. But that gets kind of tricky there because then we get that deliberating issue. So where that becomes a problem is if you have a subcommittee, and then that subcommittee makes a recommendation to the board and the board just rubber stamps. If the board is simply rubber stamping decisions of its subcommittee, then without having its own open deliberation at the open meeting, then that subcommittee should be following the Open Meetings Act because that's where the real decision and deliberations are being made. Oh, it's purely advisory, and the advisory opinion is going to be discussed and deliberated at the open meeting, then that subcommittee might not have to be subjected to the full strictures of the Open Meetings Act. The Open Meetings Act also does not apply to social or chance gatherings or conferences that is not designed to avoid the Open Meetings Act. What that means is we can all still go to the July 4th holiday party. But when we're at the holiday party, we turn off our deliberations, and we only talk about the weather, or your children, or whatever's going on. You cannot, in these social and chance gatherings, deliberate, start having a discussion about a public policy. So make sure you don't do that. In fact, I know of one board that two or three, it was a five-member board, anytime a third one would come to the very small local bar, one of the others would leave to make sure there was never a quorum and they couldn't be accused of deliberating over drinks. Image is an important thing. So what is a meeting? A meeting is anytime there's a convening of a public body at which a quorum is present for the purpose of deliberating towards or rendering a decision on a public policy. So anytime you intentionally get together with at least a quorum, as a 12-member board, that's seven, anytime at least seven get together and start deliberating on public policy, that's a meeting. So you better follow the rules if you're going to do that. As I said, quorum is the minimum number of members required to transact business, which is a simple majority in most cases. There are certain decisions that you'll have to make with a two-thirds majority, but we'll get into that, and that's primarily for issues going into closed sessions. As far as the Open Meetings Act is concerned, a quorum is whoever is the majority of your board. You may have other internal rules, you may have other statutes that require a supermajority or a two-thirds majority in order to make certain decisions, but that's outside of the Open Meetings Act. As far as you've got to be concerned with the Open Meetings Act, quorum. Anytime seven of you get together at that same bar, the sixth one should consider leaving. So what is deliberating? Deliberating is a term that is not defined in the statute, but the Court of Appeals has used a little common sense and a few dictionary definitions in order to come up with what deliberating means. But what it really means is anytime you're discussing, considering, exchanging views, debating, arguing about a particular matter that is subject, one of your public policy issues, that's going to be considered deliberating. So on an issue that was raised at the beginning, and something I mentioned, the statute came out in 1976. It's had some updates over the years, but in those days, it would have been science fiction. In 76, they didn't have computers like this. They weren't thinking about emails. Computers took up this whole room in order to pump out two plus two equals chair. I mean, four, sorry, I have little kids. They sure were not contemplating cell phones. I mean, I don't know if anybody remembers the Wall Street movie in 87. He had a cellphone that was as big as a brick. And then just, you know, two years later in Die Hard, the cellphone was still that big. You know, that's 30 years ago. Now, we've got a computer in our pocket that is more powerful than all of the computers around the world when this statute was enacted. So they didn't have any of these things in mind, but these are the things that can get us in trouble. Because deliberating can be and often is incidentally done through emails, can also be done through texting. So it's very important that if you receive an email to all board members, you'll often get these. It's okay for your board, or for your executive director, or for someone to send you an informational email, and that goes out to the entire board. What you have to make sure you don't do is hit Reply All with some comments on certain things. When you're receiving information, take it, hold on to it, maybe take some notes, bring it up at the next open meeting. Don't hit Reply All, because once you hit Reply All, now you may be deliberating. And remember, once you hit Reply All, all of those emails are probably going to be subject to the Freedom of Information Act, which means eventually, just always assume someone will be able to see whatever you've emailed. If, even if you have some emails and texts that are not relevant to what's going on, you could still be subjected to FOIA. It might not necessarily mean there's an Open Meetings Act violation, but you could be in an embarrassing situation. There is a town in, or rather, a city in Wasna, I won't mention what it is, but some people call it A Squared. They got into a little bit of trouble. I like to use them as an example because they weren't a client of our firms at the time that this happened, and it was all over the news. But someone was unhappy about a decision that was made at a public meeting, so they sent some FOIA requests. As a result of getting the records in response to the FOIA requests, there were a number of emails that were included. Well, anytime you see an email that's printed out, it has a timestamp on it. It shows when you sent that email. Well, that sleuthing detective just took the time of certain emails and realized that emails were being exchanged during public meetings. So there were board members that were sitting on their computers emailing each other instead of just openly talking about whatever was going on. And the worst part is, a lot of the emails that came out didn't have anything at all to do with what was going on with the particular public issue. But that led to more FOIA requests, requests for those councilmember's cellphone records. There were all kinds of things that came out, and needless to say, those involved are no longer councilmembers sitting on those boards. So, and some of the stuff was coming up during budget meetings. I mean, you guys are dealing with a multimillion-dollar budget. Do you really want your constituents to find out that you guys were talking about which bar to go to afterwards, or whether or not you like so-and-so's shoes while they're giving their presentation? Absolutely not. So it's best that we don't use our phones or our computers during the meeting, and we certainly don't email and text each other during those meetings. Social media can also come into this. Just like no one was contemplating cell phones, even 10 years ago, no one was contemplating how strong and powerful Facebook and Twitter were going to be. So the example we have is if someone goes onto their Facebook page and starts championing an idea, if another board member then responds on that timeline with a whole different argument, and it continues going back and forth, that could be deliberation. You could be getting in trouble, and now the whole world can see it because you're doing it right on Facebook, but you're not doing it at an open meeting that complied with the Open Meetings Act's requirements. So it's important, you can give a position, but don't engage in any type of back and forth or argument or deliberation. I think it's safest just to avoid most social media, but can't always convince everyone to do the same. So in all of those examples I brought up, in exchanging emails, the Reply All, texting during the meeting, getting into an argument on Facebook or Twitter, none of the procedural requirements of the Open Meetings Act were followed. So what are those requirements? Well, first off, we need to have a notice. All public bodies must provide notice of their meetings, and there are certain things that every notice must contain. Notice must contain the name of the public body, the telephone number, if you have one, and the address. It must contain, or it must be posted at your principal office and any other locations you consider appropriate. You can also use cable TV to post things. You can also post it on your website. If you have a regular board of directors' meeting, like you do at the beginning of every year, where you come out with your regular schedule of what all of your regular meetings are going to be, you have 10 days from that point to publish your calendar of what your regularly scheduled meetings are going to be. If there's any change to those regular meetings, that schedule, you must post that within three days of whenever you've had your meeting that changes that schedule. Then if you have special or rescheduled meetings, you have to post your notice for those at least 18 hours before the meeting in a prominent and conspicuous place at your primary office, and, here's the small language, if you have a website, posted on your website. For some reason, the legislature can't say that in 10 words, it took them a paragraph. So if you have to reschedule a meeting, you must repost your notice within 18 hours before you start it up again. If you have a special meeting, you must post the notice at least 18 hours before having the meeting. Since you guys have a website, you should just always post all of your notices on the website, which I believe is the current practice. If you have a regular meeting that has started according to the schedule that you've already got, and you go into recess, and you don't reconvene for at least 36 hours, then you have to renotice it. Now, most boards aren't going to say, "We're going to take a recess, and I'll meet you back here in two days." Most recesses are going to be relatively short. But if something comes up where you guys need to take a recess, and it's going to be more than a day and a half before you reconvene, we have to redo the notice. Emergency meetings. This is one that very rarely comes up, but just in case, if there is a severe and imminent threat to the health, safety, and welfare of the public, and at least two-thirds of your members, so in this case, you need at least eight of the board members to agree that if you had to follow the regular notice rules, it would be a detrimental delay on your efforts to respond to that immediate threat, then you can waive the 18-hour notice. But even in that case, you still have to make paper copies of whatever notice you do plan to use, explain in detail why you didn't comply with the 18-hour notice rule, and explain in detail means, don't just recite the language from the statute. Post the notice on your website, and send out a copy to the board of commissioners so that they have a copy of it. So that's a lot of work to do just to avoid the 18-hour notice, and again, that only comes up if there's an imminent threat to the safety, welfare of the community. So it's rarely going to come up. And again, your explanation can't just simply be imminent threat to the health of the public or danger to public welfare and safety. You need to have real reasons. So this does not create any special, if you do happen to have an emergency meeting, it doesn't create any legal defense for your failure to comply with any other rules of the Open Meetings Act. So if you happen to follow everything about this emergency meeting and you get here, you still have to follow all of the other procedures. Your deliberations need to be made in public. Just because you think you have to have an emergency meeting doesn't mean you can deliberate outside of having the actual meeting. Again, on that notice issue, people can send you a subscription. They can say, "I want you to send me a copy of all of your notices," and then you'll have an obligation to do that. Anytime that there's a new notice, you have to send those out to those people. They must be made available without cost to any newspaper, radio, or television station that asks for them. And now that we're past notice, we can talk about the actual meetings. So if at any time anybody has a question, feel free to chime in, and if I haven't covered anything at the end, I'll take general questions, but.
Question, Pam?
What is a notice?
Notice is the document that states that we're having a meeting.
And the time, and where, and stuff like that?
Well, the agenda can count as your notice, if that's what's publicly available, and that's what's published on your website and posted outside in a conspicuous area. The Open Meetings Act does not specifically require that you have an agenda. Your own internal ordinances or enabling resolution of the statutes may require an agenda, other statutes, but the Open Meetings Act doesn't require the agenda. The Open Meetings Act requires the notice that just says who we are, where we are having the meeting, the phone number, and posted on the website in a conspicuous place here at the main office.
If we just published our yearly calendar, that would be all we had to do?
You still need to have it posted here at the building.
Right.
So posted here at the building and on the website generally suffices, unless you have newspaper that's asked for it, or people that have requested that you send it to them on the yearly fee.
Eddie? What about closed sessions?
We're going to get to closed sessions. So, but just so you know, a closed session is something you can only go into when you are at an open meeting. So you wouldn't generally post that we're going to go into closed session, because that would imply that you've already made the decision that we're going to, that we're having a closed session, but all decisions must be made at an open meeting. If that makes sense.
We do put it on our agenda.
Which is fine.
That we expect to have a closed session.
Which is fine, but we're not posting a notice saying, "Closed session, meeting of the board." Right. So in that situation, it's fine. And we'll get to the closed session in more detail in a second.
We've been specifically debating about the notice requirement. So it was Chris's recommendation, and I've been recommending based upon the case law, not the act, that we should be saying that this is the exception with which we are going into closed session.
Absolutely. And then there's even, I don't know if you saw the most recent case from the Court of Appeals that's published that states, "For certain exceptions, you need to go into even maybe a little bit more detail on those exceptions," which I can get into a little bit more when we get to those parts. But you can include that on your agenda, which is doubling as the notice, and there's nothing wrong with that. In the minutes, it's very important. We'll get to the minutes issue, but in the minutes is where it's most important, that you have the explanation detailing the exception and why you're going into the closed session.
I think we, that we're asking the questions, that the notice requirement has been something that has been up for debate. And again, we got Chris's recommendation, and it's been mine vehemently, that we always notice the exception with whatever clarity we need to, but that that should be on our agenda that is serving as notice.
If we know in advance that we're most likely going to consider a motion to go into closed session, I absolutely agree, and I think it is a best practice to include that within your notice.
So can I, if we don't know ahead of time, if something comes up at the meeting and there's a motion to go into closed session, that's acceptable?
It's acceptable as long as your minutes reflect the purpose for going into closed session, and you've done the appropriate vote necessary to go into that closed session.
Oh, the 18-hour notice does not apply?
Well, no. The meeting will have been noticed.
Right.
And there is an open meeting.
Right.
During the open meeting, you will vote to go into a closed session. So you don't have to have 18-hour notice for every time you enter a closed session. You have to have the 18-hour notice for any special meeting that, any special meeting that's not part of your regularly scheduled meeting. So no matter what, every closed session has to start in an open meeting. The open meeting is what needs to be noticed. If the whole purpose of the open meeting, that special meeting, is only to consider a motion to go into closed session, it's very good practice and highly recommended that you include the purpose that you intend to have a motion to go into closed session. So in that situation, you would include it within that 18-hour notice. But if something were to come up during today's meeting that someone wants to go into closed session, and it's one of the accepted exceptions to the open meeting portion, we can still do that as long as we follow the procedure, we state the reason, we cite the exemption, and we take the appropriate vote necessary to go into that closed session.
I understand the vote, but I want to make sure you do have to have a clear exception to the Open Meetings Act. You can't just say, "I want to go into a closed session."
Correct.
Okay.
In order to be in compliance. We'll get into some of those issues a little bit more, but we can probably speed through it a little bit more since we've already addressed some of it. But again, only have your meeting if there's been proper notice. All meetings, again, shall be open to the public, shall be held in a place that's available to the general public. All persons shall be permitted to attend the meeting unless otherwise provided within the statute. People have the right to come in, videotape, broadcast live on the Internet, or on TV, or on the radio, anything that happens at an open meeting. They don't have to give prior notice that they want to do so. Anyone could come in that door right now with a camera and videotape this entire presentation. There's nothing we can do about it unless we have our own rules that establish some guidelines as to how they can do it. So we could say, "Yes, you can record, but you have to do it from this area so you're not disrupting the meeting," things like that. But you can't prevent someone from wanting to record an open and public meeting. All decisions must be made at the meeting open to the public. So we were talking about closed sessions earlier. In closed sessions, we can't make decisions. You still have to come out of the closed session and make your decision at the open part of the meeting. And again, the decisions that must be made at the open meeting, that includes, if you guys are having a discussion by a Reply All email, and you say, "Okay, let's go for it." Let's say seven people agreed we should do something. That looks like a decision that's made by email, and not a decision that was made at an open meeting. It's another, don't do the Reply All. All of your deliberations must take place at the open meetings. So that's anytime you're exchanging your views, deliberating, arguing, whatnot, all of that needs to take place in the open meeting unless we're going into one of those closed sessions. Those are the only time you can have certain parts of the deliberation in a closed meeting. But that doesn't mean you can still have it outside in an email. Never deliberate an email. I don't think I can stress that enough. You can either deliberate openly, or if we have an exception to go in for a closed session, we can deliberate there. But all deliberations need to be here. All right.
Question?
Go ahead.
So what if a member of the board wants to lobby other members of the board to perhaps support them if they want to run for an office, if they want to get a certain issue brought forward? Is that something that's running danger?
Well, someone that wants to run for a particular office, that would, it could potentially be an issue if the office that they're lobbying for is an appointed position that this board has authority to appoint them for, if they're doing that outside of the open meeting. But if someone is just looking for support because they're running for a wholly different public office other than.
No, for a board position.
Oh.
Say I'm running against Betty for chairman of the board. There is an exception which would allow me to contact every single person by email, and it would not violate a.
And you can also take a straw poll, as long as everyone's not confirming, you know, explicitly confirming that this is what I will vote for. There is authority that you can take a straw poll for certain matters so that you know whether or not it's even worth trying to bring it up, but you still would need to deliberate at the open meeting, give your reasons for and against, so that it doesn't look like it's simply a rubber stamp. I've had situations where that type of thing has come up, where people have. I've had situations where that type of thing has come up where people have said, "Okay, how about this? At the Christmas party, I'm going to run for chairman. Would you guys support me? Because as soon as I become chairman, we're going to fire so-and-so." And then at their first meeting of the year, the organizational meeting, the three out of the five vote for A to be the chairman and his first order of business is to fire the administrator. Well, that's going to look bad. Looks like you've already came up with your decision. You didn't have any public deliberations. So it's best to try to avoid as many behind-the-scenes type things as you can. The whole purpose of the Sunshine Laws is to promote openness. If it feels wrong, there's a good chance it probably is.
If you separate the issue from the campaigning, just say I want to campaign for office and say my general theories on being a board chair, and I want to contact every member separately, and that is something that we would be voting on at a meeting. That still is an exception to the Open Meetings Act. Right?
Well, it's not one of the enumerated exceptions for getting us into a closed session or something like that, but it would be you getting a straw poll. If you are outside campaigning and saying, "Give me a yes," and confirm your yes, if you're getting everyone to commit to their vote before the meeting, then you could be in trouble.
Yeah.
You keep referencing email, but does that also include text?
Oh, absolutely.
Because you didn't say text specifically?
Oh, I'm sorry. No, yes, all technology. Anytime you can do a, I mean, we have the ability now to send massive group texts. You could have the entire board as a group and you could be sending texts to that entire board. I would not recommend doing that. So yes, texting applies as well. Test, and just texting back and forth between people can be considered deliberation if you're texting and you're exchanging your views on something and those are not things that you bring up in an open meeting. You could be, you could run afoul. Back for the meeting fundamentals though. Whenever people come to meetings, you can't require them to register. They are not required to give you their name and their address. So you can't kick people out because they refuse to sign an attendee sheet. That's come up a number of times. Don't do that. We had public comment earlier. No one took advantage of it, but the Open Meetings Act explicitly requires that you allow public comment. A lot of public bodies have public comment at the beginning and then at the end of meetings. You are allowed to come up with your own internal rules and regulations on how public comment can proceed, so you can give a time limit for individual speakers. But what you can't do is give a total time limit for all of the public. So you couldn't say, "All public comment must take place in the next 10 minutes," or "Forever hold your peace," because then you're denying certain people. If the first three people use up their allotted three minutes, you're leaving one minute left for everyone else that may want to comment. And that could be a problem. Another thing about public comment is public comment, you should consider it, the public commenting, don't consider it an opportunity to debate back. You could be considered violating the Open Meetings Act if you interrupt or start arguing with somebody from the public that is making a comment, particularly if your argument with them is eating into their time. There's actually a recent case from a couple of years ago, an opinion that came out of the Western District of Michigan, which is a federal court, but one of the issues that came up was the Open Meetings Act and whether or not an individual board member could be considered to have intentionally violated the Open Meetings Act by arguing with someone who was commenting during public comment, arguing with that person so as to effectively prevent that person from making a public comment.
Eddie?
You don't want to do that.
I just wanted to clarify a couple of things. There, sometimes we've had issues where our advocates come en masse, and what we've done is if we anticipate that, we try to have a presentation, we might have a presentation to try and address some of their concerns because otherwise we might have 100 people making public comment. Is that okay?
Absolutely. And one of the reasonable regulations that you can try to impose or that you can enact, again, anytime you have these rules though, they need to be rules that you've adopted and you've made available so that everyone knows these other rules. But you can say, if, let's say, X number of people want to get up and say the same thing, you can ask that they appoint a particular spokesperson so you don't have to hear the exact same comment 20 times in a row. So you can have rules in place that can try to regulate and limit. You are not obligated to, if we had 100 people here, you don't have to sit here for the next four days just so that every single person can get through public comment. So we can do things to try to limit them as best as we can, as long as they are consistent with our published rules.
We do state on the bottom of our agenda that everybody gets what the rules are. And for example, we say five minutes. We don't always want to interrupt somebody, you know, when they're telling a passionate story. We want to hear it. But it is okay if it's going too long to say, "I'm sorry, your five minutes are up."
Absolutely. And just, not a requirement, but as a practice tip, if you are keeping track of the time, maybe giving a warning, you know, in football, the two-minute warning. If you're using five minutes, you can give somebody eight, "We're getting close to the time. You've got a minute left," something like that. There are certain, some public bodies actually have a posted running clock. So, okay, so if you have that going, then they can see it, but maybe a friendly reminder that they're getting close to their time may help speed things along.
Understanding that if a person is then entering conduct that would be equivalent to disorderly under the criminal code, that conduct does not have to be tolerated.
Absolutely. That's the only reason you can exclude someone from a public meeting is if they are committing a breach of the peace at the meeting. So it can't be, "Oh, we know this guy is going to be a pain. We can't prevent him from coming in." You actually have to give him the opportunity to be the pain, or she. But they have to commit the breach of peace at the meeting in order to exclude them. So yes, if they are going beyond their time and they are refusing to step away from the mic, they are refusing to be quiet, which is in a sense, interrupting your ability to conduct the important public business that you must do, that could potentially be considered a breach of the peace actually committed at the meeting. I wouldn't recommend that anyone here try to do the physical removal. In that situation, call the police, let them deal with it. So there are a number of exceptions in Section 3 to which the Open Meetings Act doesn't apply to an otherwise public body. I'm not going to go through them. Most of them are boring. It's things like the Workers' Compensation Appellate Committee when it's hearing a particular case. But there are two that will apply to us, and that's if we have a committee, like I mentioned before, that is only, only has the authority to make non-policy resolutions or tributes of memorial. That doesn't count. But that committee also needs to be a subquorum committee. I would never recommend making a subcommittee of at least seven members because then you're always going to be running into, it's, you could be making decisions for the entire board. And then again, I mentioned it earlier, but the social or chance gathering, not designed to avoid the act. So you can't get together after tonight's meeting and say, "Hey, now let's all go down to Applebee's. I'll get everybody a Brutus and we'll call it a social chance gathering and we'll talk what we really wanted to talk about, about that so-and-so's issue." It has to be a social or chance gathering that has nothing to do with trying to avoid the act. So now we're going to get into those closed sessions. Again, all sessions must be open unless we can go into a closed session for a specific exception. Exceptions, these reasons that we can go into closed session are not mandatory. You never have to go into closed session. These are options that are available to you if you want to go into closed session for these reasons. All decisions, again, must be made at the open meeting. So just because we can go into closed session to talk about so-and-so's employment history doesn't mean that we can make the determination to impose disciplinary action or termination in that closed meeting. You'll still have to come out of the closed session to make any decisions. So you can deliberate, but you cannot make a final decision in that closed session. Some of the closed sessions require a two-thirds roll call vote of all of your available members. So that means if we had a meeting where we only have seven members present, we cannot go into closed session for any of those exceptions that require a two-third vote because we only have seven and we'd need eight. Anytime, this is back to the minutes. Anytime that there is a vote taken or a reason going into the closed session, we need to explicitly write that out, the reason we went into the closed session. And if it's one of those exceptions that requires a roll call vote, you need to write that out in the minutes. So whoever the clerk is, needs to keep track of all the i's and all the n's. Separate set of minutes must be kept for each closed session. These are not to be disclosed. These are not public records. You can only disclose closed session minutes if you are ordered to do so in a legal action. And those minutes of a closed session may be destroyed one year and one day after the approval of the minutes of the meeting that you voted to go into the closed session. So that means if we voted to go into closed session today, the minutes from today's meeting and that vote won't be approved until next month's meeting. So one year and one day from next month's meeting, you would be able to destroy your closed session minutes from today. So it's really one year, one day, plus a month, give or take, in most situations. So these are the purposes that you can go into closed session. And so I put at the bottom of each one of these whether you need or don't need that two-third full roll call. So the first is to consider dismissal, suspension, or disciplining, or to hear complaints or charges against personnel, public officer, employee, staff of the agency. But you can only do this one if the person requests the closed session. If the person does not want to be in closed session, you can't go into closed session to discuss those issues, only if that person that's subject to those disciplinary hearings, suspension, dismissal issues, only if they want to go into closed session. And if at any time during the closed session that person says, "I want to go back out into the open session," you better stop talking about it and you better go back into the open session. Another thing about that closed session, if you go into closed session to talk about someone's employment, only talk about that person's employment. Don't let it lead into a discussion of somebody else. I've had that issue come up. Went into a particular township, went into a closed session to discuss their township supervisor's employment. 20 minutes later, they came out of closed session, a motion was made to fire the chief of police. There was a short deliberation and the chief of police, who was on vacation, got a letter the next day saying he had been fired. That looked really bad. Don't be in that situation. You can consider dismissal, suspension of a student of a public body, but again, this one's not going to apply to you, so I'll move on. You can have strategy negotiation sessions for collective bargaining. This you can go in whether either side requests it. So if you want to go into a closed session to discuss collective bargaining, you can. If the union wants you to go into closed session to discuss collective bargaining, you can, but you don't have to in either situation. But at least one side has to want to or request it. And again, you don't need a two-third vote for that. Just need simple majority. So if we only had seven members here, you'd only need four in order to do that. Here's one that does require a two-third roll call vote, and that's to consider the purchase or lease of real property. Don't know how often that comes up, but if it does, we need a two-third vote of the whole board. This one also requires a two-third vote to consult with your attorney regarding trial or settlement strategy, but only in connection with specific pending litigation, and only if an open meeting would have a detrimental financial impact on the litigating or settlement strategy. Well, that second part, if it's going to have a detrimental effect, that's usually pretty simple to meet. But on this particular exception, the Michigan Court of Appeals has recently indicated that when you are taking that motion down in your minutes, you must not just say that we're going in to talk about pending litigation. You have to specifically identify the pending litigation. So if it's the case of Neal versus Oakland CHN, you have to say, "To go into closed session to discuss Neal versus Oakland CHN pending case, blah, blah, blah." So just make sure that your minutes, at a minimum, state the case name, case number, as much as you know about the case or what the title of the case is, to make sure that you are in compliance. You can go into closed session to consider contents of an application, only if that person requests that you review their application in closed session. But if you're going to hold any interviews, you have to do those in open session. So if you're just looking at the employment applications and the resumes and they request that you do it in closed session, you can do that. But if you're going to interview them, it has to be in an open session. And again, that one's a two-third vote. This doesn't apply to us, but partisan caucuses of the state legislature can go into a closed session. So look who's not being open. They've also made sure that they're not subject to FOIA. You can also go into closed session to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute. So this is the way that you can go into closed session to discuss an attorney-client privileged document. So if you get an opinion from your attorney, but it's not something that's related to pending litigation, as long as that opinion is in writing, that's an opinion that would be exempt from disclosure under FOIA. Or if you're going to, if you want to discuss medical issues or protected information of a particular consumer, you go into closed session to discuss those because that's information that's not subject to disclosure. Generally, those aren't things that are necessarily coming all the way up to the board level, but primarily this is the exception we use to go into closed session to discuss attorney-client privileged materials that don't fall under the pending litigation exemption. Again, minutes must be kept for all meetings. The minutes, sort of like with the notice, must state the date, time, place. The minutes must include all of the members that were present, all of the decisions that were made, all of those purposes that you may have gone into a closed session, all roll call votes that were taken at your meeting. That's pretty much all that's really required under the Open Meetings Act. You can go into more detail as you wish. Once your minutes are approved, that becomes the official record of the meeting. Now, a lot of meetings are recorded, but the official record of the meeting are what's in those minutes, once those minutes are approved. Minutes are public records, subject to FOIA. Once you're done with your meeting, you have eight days to put out your, business days to put out your draft of the minutes so that the public can start reviewing those. Five days after the meeting in which the minutes are approved, they need to be available. People can request copies of them. You can only charge them for what it actually costs to print and copy. And I say, remember the recent changes to FOIA. That's because, as FOIA changed a few years ago, that printing and copying is really becoming an important piece because we can no longer charge whatever we want. We can't make a blanket rule of 25 cents per page or even 10 cents per page. It has to be what it actually costs. In most cases, it's usually two, three, four cents if you really break down what it costs to print something off. If your minutes are available on your website, you can always defer someone to the website and let them know that they can get them for free there. And if they insist on getting a paper copy, then you can charge them and print it out.
Sorry, Pam?
So what's considered approved minutes?
Approved minutes are. Approved minutes are the minutes, you bring the minutes to the next meeting, and once those minutes are approved at the meeting following the minutes that they represent, once they're approved, they become the approved official minutes, and you have five days to then make them publicly available. So when you're at the board meeting and you're presenting the minutes from the previous meeting for approval, if there's any changes that need to be made, once they're approved, once the vote's taken to approve the minutes, after that, those are your official minutes. You have five days to make them publicly available.
By a vote of the board members, or by a signature of the board chairperson?
Do we review minutes at our meetings?
Yes. First, I get the draft of the board meeting minutes and make any corrections or recommendations that I feel are necessary, and then they're brought to the next board meeting, and they have to be approved by the full board. What we don't do, I'm not clear on the committee of the whole, because it's a committee, we haven't been formally doing that, so I have a feeling we need to correct that.
Probably something we would want to do is make sure that our minutes are being approved at the committee of the whole. Is the committee of the whole the entire board? Yeah. And so if, I would recommend that those meeting minutes be approved. You are, the meeting is otherwise subject to the Open Meetings Act of the committee of the whole, so it would be appropriate to have those meeting minutes be also approved in the same manner that your regular minutes are. You shall not include personally identifiable information that if released would prevent the public body from complying with the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act of 1974. That's generally not something we're going to have to be concerned with, but just throwing it in there. Again, as I mentioned earlier, you need to keep the closed session minutes separately. They don't become part of the packet, they don't become part of what is subject to the review and approval in the open meeting. So there are a number of different ways that you can go about approving closed session meeting minutes. Because a closed, because closed session meeting minutes are not a public record, you could go into a closed session to review material exempt from disclosure, and just go into the closed session simply to review those minutes. There's a presumption, though, that your closed session meeting minutes are approved as soon as you approve the minutes of the meeting that you voted to go into the closed session. And then I've had some boards, some councils, will take their minutes during the closed session, and before we go out of that particular closed session, we'll read aloud those minutes. So once we are in the open session, the first vote is, do you approve the closed session meeting minutes that were read before we came out of the closed session? None of those, I mean, there's not a specific way that is dictated by the Open Meetings Act that requires you to do it. If you're not going to review your closed session meeting minutes, it's going to be presumed that they are approved when you approve the vote, you approve the minutes where the vote took place to go into the closed session.
Detail do the closed session minutes have to be?
The statute, the Open Meetings Act doesn't specifically say how detailed those minutes have to be. The statute doesn't describe how detailed your regular minutes have to be, other than as long as you have those specific things that are outlined, the date, time, location, all roll calls, everyone present, every vote that was taken. The level of detail beyond what's minimally required by the statute is up to you, unless you have a separate statute, your own internal resolution, or ordinance, or policy, or bylaw that requires more. But violation of your own internal rules doesn't put us on the hook for an Open Meetings Act violation. All of your decisions, as long as they're made at an open meeting, are presumed to be valid, but if someone has a problem with it, the prosecuting attorney, the attorney general, or, and I bolded it, any person, may commence a civil action to challenge the validity of one of your decisions. They go to court and file this, they can invalidate it if you have not had your meeting open to the public and held in a place generally available to the public. If you did not allow all persons to attend, if you did not allow persons to attend that wanted to record, or you didn't allow someone to record the meeting, that can be a reason for invalidation. If you did not make your decision at the open meeting, but you made your decision because you guys had a reply all to an email earlier, or after the meeting, something came up and you hit a reply all, or something like that. Or if you deliberated outside of an open meeting and without it being in a valid closed session. So if you didn't deliberate in an open meeting, or if you didn't make your decision in an open meeting, or if you didn't allow people to attend, or you didn't allow people to record, or you didn't hold it in a place generally available to the public, all of those reasons, all of your decisions at that meeting can be invalidated. Most of the time, people that want to invalidate a decision have 60 days after the approval of the minutes where that decision took place. So if you make a decision today, that 60-day clock doesn't start, the 60-day clock starts after your next meeting where you've approved today's minutes. Then they've got 60 days to invalidate. There are a couple certain situations when you're approving contracts with regard to bonds, bid assessments, and things like that, where that limitation of 60 days is cut down to 30 days. It's not a situation that comes up all too often, but, so people that want to invalidate a decision have to move relatively quickly. Generally, people that want to invalidate a decision are people that feel maybe they wrongly didn't get a bid, or, you know, several contracts were on the table and you chose one. Most of the time, invalidation is coming as situations like that. The venue, where can they file the lawsuit? Well, here, it's going to be in Oakland County Circuit Court, for the most part. If someone does file a suit saying that you took an action that should be invalidated, you can reenact your decision if you follow the appropriate steps at your very next meeting. They can't use that reenactment as evidence that your first decision was invalid, but your decision only becomes valid from the point of the new decision. So from the date of reenactment is when it becomes effective. This is where we get into the more important lawsuit-type issues, and that's when someone files a lawsuit to compel compliance. So if you're not complying with the act, let's say you're having meetings but you never post notice, or you're having meetings but you never allow people to record, you are doing something that's not in compliance with the act, someone can file a lawsuit requesting an injunction. This is an important one, because if they are successful in this type of action, they are entitled to receive their attorney's fees and costs. This used to be the main one that people would sue under, because when you're seeking injunctive relief, they didn't have, there is no statute of limitations. So people could scour old meeting minutes and find minor violations and file a lawsuit. And the courts, the Court of Appeals, for a long time, had determined that even if you weren't successful on getting injunctive relief, if you could prove that there was some violation of the Open Meetings Act, what they would call declaratory relief, they would still allow you to recover attorney's fees. So we had a lot of people that were filing lawsuits that made no difference in the grand scheme of things, but they found some minor technical problems with your meetings, or with your notices, or something, something that didn't really affect the outcome, but they were then recovering $10,000, $15,000, $20,000 in attorney's fees, which seems ridiculous. So thankfully, in 2015, the Supreme Court corrected that and said that whole line of cases that allowed for simply declaratory relief being sufficient to entitle someone to attorney's fees overturned that whole line, and now you have to obtain the injunctive relief. And that's a pretty difficult standard. So we've seen these types of cases, kind of, they haven't completely gone away, but they've been significantly reduced, at least in my practice. I don't know if you've had to deal with as many, which has been nice.
Always do the best practice for this reason. So when we were talking about the notice requirement for the closed session, and why, I know Chris and I talked about this, why we say that it's best practice, is because of the openness. Public needs to know what we may or may not be talking about later in a closed session, and it may be something they want us to have knowledge about, or their opinion to weigh upon us as we deliberate and then come back out and make the decision. So we believe that for complete openness, that is why that notice requirement is the best practice, so that we don't get into this at a later time.
Absolutely. Oh, again, if, like I said, this used to be the primary suit we would be dealing with on a liability issue. Now, there's also an action for mandamus, which is essentially the same thing, but they would be filing an action in the Court of Appeals, asking the Court of Appeals to order us to comply with the Open Meetings Act. Again, if we're not complying and an injunction is issued, so let's say someone files a suit saying, "We're not following the notice provisions," and we refuse to follow the notice provisions, and the court has to issue an injunction ordering us to comply, well, now that person's going to be entitled to recover all of their attorney's fees, and they're going to claim that for some reason it cost $375 an hour for 180 hours to file a simple Open Meetings Act complaint, and then we're stuck dealing with whether or not they should get $40,000 or $20,000. It's just an issue we don't want to deal with. But luckily, we're not going to be in that situation. So now, let's get to the part where it gets even more fun. The penalties that can go against individual board members. Any public official who intentionally violates this act is guilty of a misdemeanor, which is a personal fine of $1,000, or up to $1,000. If you are convicted a second time, it's $2,000, and you can go to jail for up to a year. So that issue I brought up before, that example from that Western District case, there was a board member who was arguing with someone during public comment, the court said, potentially that could be considered an intentional violation. So you want to really avoid that. If you are emailing, if you are hitting reply all, particularly when you know you shouldn't, that could be considered intentionally violating, because you are intentionally deliberating outside of an open meeting. Be very careful about that. That's a written record, and assume everyone can always see your emails, that's going to be exhibit number one if that comes up. There's not just criminal penalties for intentionally violating, there's also the civil penalty. The board member is personally liable for actual and exemplary damages up to $500, plus court costs and actual attorney's fees. So again, if someone is caught intentionally violating, and their other side is successful, you're not only going to be paying them the $500 fine, you're also going to be paying them for their attorney to have sued you, and their attorney's going to, again, say, "It's $375 an hour, and it took me 100 hours to prosecute this case." That's an extra $37,000. We don't want to have to deal with that. The only advantage we have is that people can't bring more than one action for a single meeting. So if you do plan on going off the deep end and violating the Open Meetings Act, get them all out in one meeting. And, no, I don't recommend ever doing that, but only one violation on that intentional provision per act. So with that, I'm sure that there's a lot more you want questions on, and I will do my best to answer those now.
Are there any questions for Andrew Makaya?
When you're talking about the lawsuits and the judgments, you're talking about somebody that's outside of the agency bringing that action, or you're talking about a board member could bring that action against the board, or a particular board member?
Interesting you bring that up. So the statute says the attorney general, the prosecuting attorney, or any person. Any person is pretty broad, they could have just said any person, and that would have also included the attorney general and the prosecutor. But we have dealt with situations where there are board members who have initiated the suit against the rest of the board. Those are strange situations. That's actually, one of those cases is what led to the Court of Appeals' most recent decision saying that you must explicitly state the name of the case you are going into closed session on, because that was a series of lawsuits initiated by a board member suing the other board. Now, a number of other issues come up with that. If that board member was present when these things took place, they may have some standing issues, being a member of the board that took the vote, but it doesn't mean that it can't happen. Doesn't mean that they're going to be successful, but it doesn't mean that a board member can't sue. I would be hopeful that we could resolve whatever issues we have in-house before a board member would take that action, but nothing in the statute itself explicitly prevents a board member from filing the suit. Other things may come into play that bring up whether or not they are a proper party to file the action. What ends up happening is they just find anybody else that's willing to do it. All they need is a straw man, just someone with a name that's willing to put their name on the paperwork and say, "I'm plaintiff. I'm Joe Public, and I was somehow injured by the Oakland Health Network going into a closed session that I didn't think they should have." Even though that person wasn't present for the meeting, could be from the UP, doesn't really matter. It's a very broad statute.
Betty?
This is mine, or the committee of the whole minutes, I could have them added to our agenda for the board meeting and approved at that time?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
Just a comment, if I can follow up. So we did have a circumstance with one of our clients where one of the council members are to deliberate. And so the next step doesn't always have to be a lawsuit, but a request of Michigan State Police to start the investigation for the criminal proceedings. So oftentimes, it's not just the civil, you could be faced with full investigation by MSP.
That happens quite a bit. When there's a board member upset with other members, they'll often contact the state police, and investigations will be initiated. So you don't even want to be in that situation.
Betty?
I just want to thank you. I assume everything you've covered is in this PowerPoint you handed out?
It is, yeah. And I passed it out with lines if you wanted to take notes, but...
We had quite a few missing today, and I think it's important for them to understand what you've covered.
PowerPoint itself has been loaded up onto the computer, so I have no problem, you guys, take whatever you need. I've sent a couple different versions of the PDF already over. I got the hard copy here, and the presentation is yours.
Thanks very much.
Just note, Jonathan, you came in late, but we just had our open meetings presentation. Is there any question that you had generally that you wanted to ask?
Actually, I've read through this material, and I didn't get a chance to compare it against some of the other things we'd received from Chris and...
Chris and I worked together on putting this presentation before he retired, so this has been in the works between us for the past several weeks. So I'm assuming it's consistent with what Chris has given you in the past. I know that I've read prior opinions of what Chris has provided to you guys when other things, or I say you guys, to the board or to the CEO in the past.
Can you reemphasize the email?
I cannot state this enough, it is a best practice to avoid the reply all button and to engage in any type of discussions amongst board members via email. So... So if you get, as a board, a packet or information from the executive director or from another employee, take it, consider it. Don't hit "reply all" and begin a deliberation.
Are you suggesting we never respond to an email, or if we do, only to an individual? And if that individual's on the board, does that then run the risk of the open meetings? Or was that question already covered?
It can if your response to the other board member is to start the deliberation process. If you're going to start exchanging views via email as opposed to doing it at an open meeting, it can implicate the Open Meetings Act and could potentially become a violation.
It's on an agenda that we don't know it will be on, be presented, nor will do we know if there will ever be any kind of vote taken on that item. So then, does it matter?
Well, if, I mean, if the question is, can we email and say, can we put this on the agenda? There's nothing wrong with that. But if it's to start debating something, the information that's been provided, and it's to start a debate about that information and what action the board should take, that's deliberation towards a decision, and that's something that should take place in an open meeting.
Oh, Jonathan, what I'm hearing Andrew say, and I think he said it like three or four times since we've been sitting here, is do not hit "reply all." He said it three or four times to us, so I think that's an important takeaway from this.
"Reply all" is the most important takeaway, if nothing else, on the email issue. But in most circumstances, there should be an avoidance of engaging in deliberation. Now, gathering information is one thing, but starting to say your opinion on one thing or another is where we run into the issue. So if you start to say, "Well, I think this, this, and this," as opposed to, "Here's the information." Just presenting information is one thing. Once you start having your different views and start posturing or trying to position something so that the deliberation process takes place outside of the meeting, so that once you get to the meeting, your mind is already made up, and it's just a rubber stamp of something that's already happened, that's where we run into the problem. So if you're already exchanging all of the ideas, you basically have your back-and-forth argument via email, and then those are not things that are part of the public discussion, then you've run into a problem.
I don't always know on a "reply all" who was blind copied on the original that came to me. Those people are not likely to receive the response. I don't know if anyone should ever send anything with a blind carbon. And the second is, so should I just list everyone out individually? What's the reasoning behind it? Don't do it.
The reason behind not doing the "reply all" is if there is an email that is, let's say, information sent out to the entire board. Let's say you get an email that has your board packet and the draft minutes for today's meeting. If you hit "reply all," and the "all" members are the all of the board members, and you hit "reply all," and you say, "Hey, I happened to notice that this is on the agenda for the upcoming meeting. I don't want to talk about this. I think this, this, that." Well, now you're deliberating. Now you're talking about an issue that's supposed to be something brought up in public meeting. And the problem is, the Open Meetings Act makes it a violation to deliberate outside of an open meeting. The alternative, the alternative is to have the debate here at the open meeting. The, it's not that there's an alternative. The appropriate action is to have your deliberations and your discussions at the open meeting. So you can make a recommendation, say, "Hey, I would like to bring this up at the meeting, but don't posture for it." So I want to talk about the contract with Green Tree.
R S J?
I want to talk about the contract with J R S J. Don't, what you don't say in your email to all of the board members or even just a few of the board members is, "I think we need to cancel the contract with J R S J because of this, that, and the other." What you say is, "I think at the next meeting, we should talk about our contract with J R S J." And then at the next meeting, you have your deliberation in the open meeting, and you make your decisions at the open meeting.
Important word is deliberating, that a lot of people think of it as you are actively making decisions. The minute you are opining, talking, sharing, viewing, you are deliberating. Would you agree with that?
Yes, and in fact, that's the part of the definition that the Court of Appeals applies. The court, like I said, deliberating itself is not defined in the statute. So the Court of Appeals looked at that word and then went to all these dictionary definitions and applied all of that, and that's where they came up with these terms, like sharing ideas, all of that back-and-forth, anything that gets you closer to rendering a decision as opposed to just having information. But it's the, what gets you closer to rendering a decision, that's deliberation. That's what can't happen outside of an open meeting unless we are in a valid closed session, an appropriately-entered closed session, which again, starts with an open meeting and ends with an open meeting.
That could be one person sharing their views with all, not even in exchange.
And it can be. And the other thing to always remember, if you're doing this in email and I can't, or by text, those are records that aren't going away. Someone will be able to find it. FOIA is going to come into play because it's likely to be a public record. Someone's going to be able to find it. Criminal and civil penalties can apply if you are intentionally violating the Open Meetings Act. No, I mean, if you do it twice, you can go to jail for a year. You're going to be on the hook for costs and fees. It's best that we maintain the best practices that we currently follow, keep everything open, follow these rules. We can enact rules that make, that are own internal policies that make us even be more open. But these are the minimum requirements that we have under the Open Meetings Act, and so...
Makaya?
Text, including text.
Yeah, including text, also including social media. Twitter, Facebook, Instagram, anything that you can, you know, respond, and it looks like there's a debate on an issue. As board members, you shouldn't be engaging in those things outside of an open meeting. You can listen to people, but don't get into the debate part. Don't get into the rendering a decision. Don't get into any of that.
Are there any other questions? I wanted to thank Betty for bringing you here to speak about this because we want to be as transparent and open with the public about everything that we're doing. So thank you for guiding us.
Thank you.
Our next presenters are with Oakland Housing Link and Jefferson Oaks Proposal. Would you be so kind as to introduce yourselves and where you're from, please?
Yes. Hi, I'm Gillian Tremble. I'm the Director of the Service Network Team here at Oakland Community Health Network.
Hi, Adam Hamilton from the Service Network Team.
Good afternoon, I'm CJ Felton. I'm Director of Development at Community Housing Network.
Hi, I'm Mark Craig. I'm President of Community Housing Network. And both of these presentations relate to Community Housing Network, and I've signed an agreement already that we promised to be brief.
Thank you.
We'll be starting with Jefferson Oaks. And I don't know how many of the board members were here when the board embarked upon a decision to purchase a number of group homes. And the reason for doing that was that the lease costs were increasing, the maintenance costs were increasing, and private owners were accruing all of the equity. And the board took on that decision with a certain amount of reluctance, for a variety of reasons, which I won't go into today. But I guess the trade-off was that the board decided that the savings that were estimated to be generated from the, using the county's bonding authority to purchase group homes was that the savings would be reinvested in other, more integrated kinds of housing. So several years ago, Community Housing Network came to you with one proposal to use a portion of the group home bond savings and leverage that against other resources so that we could take some owner-operated setting, non-group home settings, and separate the ownership from the operator. So, and we went ahead and did that. That project was successful. It was concluded several years ago. And then we have attempted a couple of times to leverage additional funds from the Federal Home Loan Bank and other sources for the remainder of the group home bond savings. And because of changing program requirements from the Federal Home Loan Bank and some of the other sources, we were unable to do that until recently. We are working on a development now, the Jefferson Oaks apartment complex that Community Housing Network is developing in Oak Park. And CJ Felton will tell you in a couple of minutes about what's involved with that development, or about it in more detail. But I'll just start out by saying this, that our philosophy about the kind of housing that we want to develop has always been consistent with the philosophy of this board and the leadership of this organization. We have passed up more development opportunities than we've taken, actually, because of wanting to not congregate people with disabilities, other people with, who've been homeless, people who've been victims of domestic violence. We do not want to develop housing that congregates those folks together or that congregates even people with poverty away from other members of the community. We think that everybody in the community gets a, should have a chance to live next door to somebody that's had a different life experience than what they have. That philosophy has guided our work for 17 years, since we started working with OCHN, then Oakland County's Community Mental Health, and it continues to guide it. And Jefferson Oaks is reflective of that philosophy. Jefferson Oaks is 60 units of affordable housing. Well, CJ will tell you more about that. But we secured a low-income housing tax credit reservation for Jefferson Oaks a few years ago, and we had an investor come in with fixed-price equity offer for that development. And the tax credit program, you may or may not understand that, but it's, I've presented on it before, but it's, essentially, it makes the housing affordable by bringing in an equity investor who gets a credit on their federal income taxes. Normally, these are corporate investors. So the pricing on the equity investment changed dramatically after the last presidential election. And the reason that it changed is because of the promise of federal tax cuts. So after the election, our investor dramatically lowered their equity investment in this development, and we had to completely restructure the development. We went ahead with it because we thought it was a good thing to do. And it's proven to be a very good thing to do. You can see on the screen a picture of that development, which is well underway. It's 80-some percent complete at this juncture. We expect to occupy, we've begun to occupy already, and we expect to occupy throughout the fall. And we're very proud of the development, but we still find ourselves in need of additional funding to help bring this thing home. And we're here today to request the addition, remaining $250,000 of the group home bond savings money that has been designated on OCHN's books for several years now, and as an investment in this particular development. And CJ can give you the kind of rationale for that and a better description of the development.
Thanks, Mark. Mark took us through the group home bond savings program already. I think you all are fairly familiar with Community Housing Network. And in fact, our colleagues that are presenting on the Oakland program after this are going to dig a little bit deeper into our specific programs, some of our more specific programs. But we strengthen communities by connecting people to housing resources. We've leveraged $120 million in resources to do that work since we were founded in 2001, and that includes the creation of 744 units of affordable housing. Most, well, predominantly in Oakland, some in Macomb, and a handful in St. Clair and Outwayne County. As Mark mentioned, we received a reservation from the State Housing Development Authority in early January of 2016 to build Jefferson Oaks. And what this involved, we purchased the vacant Thomas Jefferson School, which is on Republic between Eight and Nine Mile, right on the dividing line between Oak Park and Ferndale. That, Ferndale Public Schools, actually, they still have a problem. They're built, their infrastructure's built for about a 7,000-student enrollment, and when they came to us three years ago, they only had 3,000 students enrolled. And they did a study on what they could do with some of these buildings, and it was determined that housing was maybe the best option because it retained students in the district. So we entered in an agreement with them, applied for the funding, and received our reservation. Mark mentioned some of the challenges we had getting to construction, but it, what it involves is we have done an adaptive reuse of the school building to turn it into 21- and two-bedroom apartments. The school was built in the late '20s. It's a super neat building, and we think it's nice when you can save things and not have them end up in the landfill. On, however, it's a very large site, and on the remainder of the site, we've built an additional 40 townhome units in eight buildings. I don't know how familiar you all are with the Oak Park-Ferndale area, but it's a very diverse community, very diverse community. This is an walkable neighborhood. It's between Eight and Nine Mile. There's a lot of amenities available on Nine Mile. This is a mixed-income development. And what we mean when we say mixed income, I'll give you an example without, it gets a little complicated, but a single person could earn as little as $14,900 a year and live in one of the apartment units. A family of four could make as much as $42,540 a year. So we've got a nice range, and the really, one of the really nice things about the tax credit program is, they qualify once. And once you are, once you are in, you never have to qualify. So we end up getting some further income stratification within the community as people are able to raise their income. They don't have to leave, and it, in a lot of cases, is long-term affordable housing solutions for people. One of the, we've got a couple of things that we think are really important. We have a residence council at all of our developments, which is called the Tenant Advisory Committee. It's really a place where any interested member of the community can get together with us to talk about improvements, give us suggestions for how to make improvements to the community. They could be physical improvements, they could be programming improvements, but things that they would like to see, and we take that very seriously. We also, at Jefferson Oaks, have a significant community space available. What will be in there is a library and a reading area. We have a computer lab. We've got a very large open area that can be used for self-enrichment classes, cooking, you know, cooking classes, financial education, homebuyer education for people that want to learn about that, after-school programming for the children. It's really, it's a beautiful space to work with. And then we also have identified, and this is true in where we work in Pontiac, in our development over in East Point, we just can't, you can't just build housing. That does not make a community, that does not make a neighborhood. People make communities and neighborhoods. And we have established a community engagement coordinator position that essentially what that role is, is to connect the residents of our community with the broader community so that they become fully participating community members, and also help connect them to each... so that they become fully participating community members, and also help connect them to each other and other resources. We're working with a diverse group of people, and they have a diverse group of needs and don't always know where to turn. And that person helps connect them to those things. Jefferson Oaks is a, an inclusive community. When we talk about this concept of floating four units through the development, we couldn't tell you today which exact units they will be out of the 60 that are there. They could be, we have 21 supportive housing units dedicated to this development, which we have in all of our developments, which will be home to people who have chronic homeless issues, people, as Mark mentioned, fleeing domestic violence, people with disabilities. They could be residents of those units, but they could also be residents of the other non-supportive housing units. For instance, if it's a household that has a child with a disability. And so, what we would intend to do is continually float those throughout the development. And over time, as people move and new tenants come in, they would move throughout the development as opposed to saying, that's, that unit there is where those people live, which we think is nice. It makes a lot of sense. We also do have, for our supportive housing units, we have an onsite supportive service coordinator, whose role is to help those, the people that live in those 21 units to become more self-sufficient and help connect them with the resources they need in the community to, one, remain stably housed, and two, to foster greater self-sufficiency. One of the neat things that also works, though, is because the rest of the residents, life happens to them too, right? People lose jobs, people have illnesses, they have needs, and that supportive service coordinator is also an asset for the balance of the community members. We call it blended property management. It works really well. And to demonstrate the need for this, we opened an interest list up shortly after we got the reservation in 2016. We had 2,300 people apply to live in these 60 units, and almost half of them indicated that they had some type of a special need that would qualify them for supportive housing unit. Which, I mean, we know that the situation here in this county is very, very difficult for people to find quality, affordable housing, and I think those numbers completely back that up. All right. What we're looking at here, an investment by OCHN. We have a 15-year retention agreement on this. Those units have to remain affordable for 15 years, which means that if you make that decision now to invest in this community, 15 years from now, those units will still be affordable for people. It also is going to help leverage our total development costs of $18 million, which the largest piece of that is what Mark mentioned, is the $14 million housing tax credit equity that we received from ESHDA. Alignment?
Well, yeah, I want to mention a couple of things. First of all, to add to what CJ said, I mean, the 2,300 interest list inquiries that we got, and ultimately, applications, were, is just indicative of how difficult it is to find, as CJ said, quality affordable rental housing in this county. There's an enormous shortage. And that's really why we undertook this, this development, that and its consistency with our mission. It also aligns very well, we think, with OCHN's mission and vision. We know that housing is a key indicator of population health. We, that was the basis 17 years ago of the relationship between CHN and OCHN. And it aligns both with the annual plan and with the strategic housing plan that's been created, and will continue to do so for the next 15 years, at least, and probably beyond that as well.
All right. So, to go to the impact on the people we all serve, this is integrated and inclusive community housing, affordable. We, both the special needs units and these units we've asked you to participate in, we don't put them all in one building. We spread them throughout the entire development so that people get an opportunity to live next door to somebody who's maybe had a different life experience than they have. We think that's a good thing. This will help foster self-determination, personal development and growth, and provide independence and affordable living options. Let's get this into a couple of stories. Really neat story. There's a young man by the name of Jake. He's a resident of Oak Park. He currently receives services through CLS. He and his mother showed up at our groundbreaking, which was a year ago June. They had heard about the development, were curious what was going on, came and asked some questions, and it turns out that Jake, this was something, he, he's a recent MSU graduate, but he really, really wanted to leave mom and dad's house and have his own place. And so, we stayed in contact, and he applied when we opened up leasing three months ago, and he will move into one of those one-bedroom apartments at the school in, looks like, September. So, for him, he gets to realize his dream of living affordably, I think his rent's going to be like $350 a month in this beautiful loft-type apartment, but yet, he's living nearby his natural supports. It's an ideal situation for him. Next story is Frank, and Frank lives in our Unity Park Development Pontiac, but this is, his story is indicative of how this type of housing works for people. He started working with our PATH program in 2015, and we had a lot of difficulty engaging with him. He, he had been on and off the streets for literally decades. And we finally gained his trust, and he, he has a lot of challenges. PTSD, he still deals with today. But he was ready, he said he was ready, to try and live successfully on his own. He moved into one of our accessible homes in Unity Park. He's been there over a year, and he's thrived. With the help, we've, we provide the help of that service coordination that we talked about, but that's the kind of success stories we see with this type of housing. I just think it is, it's so important. That, we are done, and can answer any questions that you have.
Are there any questions from the board? Jonathan?
Yeah, very nice presentation. Thanks for the numbers on it. So, as I understand it, you're looking for a quarter million, $250,000. Is that for this fiscal year that we would pay it out, or next fiscal year? Okay, start October 1st.
To staff.
Great. I'm coughing as you're asking the question, so my apologies. The $250,000 would be paid out in this fiscal year, is my understanding. It is, in, as CHN noted earlier in the presentation, part of the group home bond savings from a number of years ago. So, there was $500,000 at the time, there's $250,000 remaining, so it would be the remainder of that money.
Thanks, Julian. So, the other question I have is, have we consulted with Anya in terms of where we draw these funds from? Because I know we have cash, we have investments.
Yes. Anya's aware of this request, and saw the presentation in advance of the meeting this afternoon.
So, do we know where we withdraw the funds from, or is that an Anya question?
That is an Anya question, although she did tell me that it can be a designated item for approval if needed, or it can be built within the total fiscal year 19 budget. If you're looking for more detail than that, I'm probably not your gal.
Okay. So, I only have one last question on it, which is, if we act on it, assuming it makes the, I'm assuming it makes the agenda, and we act on it, do we, will we need to have a budget adjustment because it's so sizable?
I do not believe it requires a budget adjustment. I think Anya will probably come up and correct me if that's wrong.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Yeah, Betty?
Will Anya be addressing this today?
She will not be addressing this today, is my understanding. Like I said, it can be built into the fiscal year 19 overall budget, or the board can choose to have it as a designated item for approval.
I do think we need to hear from our chief financial officer and our CEO on this matter.
Sure.
And it's not an item for it right behind you.
No. Well, hey, I'll let her talk then. I'll just get up. Okay. Sorry. Okay. So, in, in regards to your question, Jonathan, where it would come from, it would be local fund balance that we would bring this from. And then, if we were to do it in this fiscal year, yes, it's $250,000, so that does rise above the $100,000 limit. But if you all are in support of it, and we don't actually execute until fiscal year 19, we can build it into the budget that you all will approve next month anyway. That would be up to the discretion of the board, and I'm not sure, timing-wise, at this point, we're already going into September pretty quick here, so I'm not sure, timing-wise, what CHN was looking for, but likely, it would roll into fiscal year 19.
Jonathan? Did you have any more follow-up?
No, that was it.
Okay. Betty?
Well, I'm trying to understand, are you talking about having it roll into fiscal year 19 and therefore part of the plan? What is your recommendation as CFO?
Oh, assuming that the board is in agreement with this, it doesn't necessarily have to be approved separately, because we can build it right into the budget that you will approve anyway. The only way we would definitely need to do separate approval is if we did it in this year's budget, because it is not currently built into that budget.
Are there any comments from board members on that?
Just one question. We haven't heard from CHN, whether, what their needs are concerning the money, whether they need it in this fiscal year or next fiscal year. So, will we hear from them before we deliberate what their needs are?
I can answer that question now. I mean, obviously, from our perspective, the sooner the better, but, you know, take whatever time is needed to deliberate and, you know, and take whatever action is needed.
That's essentially what I was trying to find out. When do you need the money?
Yeah, well, the sooner, like I said, the sooner the better. We, because we're already, we're already spending the money, essentially. So, this would, you know, this would lock down those four floating units. And again, I just, you know, it's not on, on point with the question, but I did want to reemphasize the fact that I, actually, the floating units concept was generated by OCHN, and I like it a lot. Up until just a month or so ago, we didn't even know that something like this would be possible in a, in a tax credit development. So, we had, we've gone out and gotten legal opinions and all of that sort of thing to make sure that an infusion of capital like this into the project in exchange for designation of units is permissible, and it is. So, this just came to us relatively recently, but, so, I don't want to put you on the spot or say, you know, it's, it's time-sensitive within the next couple of weeks or anything like that. But truly, you know, within the next month or so would be very nice.
Well, it can be on the agenda next week for board approval, if that makes sense to the board. As Anya indicated, that would need separate board approval because it rises above the $100,000 mark. From an internal contract management perspective, it would not be problematic to have a contract out soon after board approval, if that's the approach that the board chooses to take. The alternative is that it can be rolled into the fiscal year 19 budget, and then that contract would come out as soon as approved to be consistent with the 10-1 start date of the fiscal year.
And that would be acceptable to us as well.
Okay. I was going to ask, is there some negative, would it be negative to you if we waited and rolled it into the budget planning?
I don't believe so.
There might be one thing worth considering. We are, we're currently leasing right now. Now, I'm quite certain that of the first 11 residents that moved in, I know one is a recipient of services from OCHN. I think the second is as well. But in order to make sure that we had all four of those units in the initial lease-up of the 60, the sooner we can work with that, the better. I still wouldn't imagine it would be long if, for some reason, this went into November. We think we'll be all leased up by the end of November. So, that just might be one thing worth considering.
Well, it will not need to go into November from an internal contracts perspective, assuming board approval. We'll be able to have the contract ready and executed 10-1 if, if approved by the board as part of the budget as well.
And I was assuming that as well.
So, it occurred to me, you said this was, this is for a piece of property that's going to be there for 15 years before, before values flow, or, I'm probably paraphrasing it poorly, but it's, it's locked at a low-income level for 15 years. And you had a, you had an investor who was going to invest in this, but he backed, they backed out, whoever they are. So, are we looking this as a $250,000 grant to you, or are we looking at this as an investment that we hold on and see proceeds in 15 years?
No. We, we would not be able to promise that that $250,000 would be returned at the end of 15 years. So, to that extent, yes, it would be a grant.
Okay.
That's because of the tax credit compliance.
I was just going to say, I was in the audience back in 2006 when the group homes were being purchased, and I remember the very dialogue about the savings from the bonds to be reinvested in low-income housing. So, I'm supportive of the work, and anything that does to make affordable housing for the people we serve would be something I would be willing to support.
Any other board comments?
I know we don't usually take action.
No, we're not.
I'm, I'm not saying to take action, but can we make a decision about how we want to handle this, or how we want to instruct the staff to handle this?
I think the issue is, the board would have to make, someone on the board would have to make a motion at the board meeting to either take a vote to approve a contract that's over $100,000, or they could make the motion to have this built into the budget.
Just wanted to ask Anya one more time. We've heard from our CEO, so what, is there any preference or any benefit to us waiting for?
It would be we would build it into the annual plan and budget.
For 19?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll put it on the agenda. Well, actually, we don't really need to vote on that. You can just build it in unless anybody objects on, on the board.
Okay. Then we'll. What we'll do is, we'll make sure we call that out in, in the detail when I walk you through the significant changes. I will have a blurb about that, and we'll make sure we cover it so that you're aware of the adjustment.
Are there any other comments, having heard Anya's suggestion at this time to put it on the agenda? I'm sorry, Jonathan?
That's all right. I mean, I, I know where I'd stand on, on making this grant, that I'd be on the pro side of doing that, but I didn't know if we, since they're still building, the team is still building out what's going to go into next year's stuff, whether that would be an itemized item only because of its special nature, or if people are also in favor. I'm trying to figure out how to ask this without implying deliberation. I don't know how many people. Okay, okay, yeah, yeah. I'm learning this open meeting, sorry. I, I don't know if, if we'd have enough on the board that, I wouldn't want to see the budget stopped if people were not interested in making this investment. I, of course, am in support of this investment, of this grant, sorry, grant.
Well, if you present it.
So, Kathleen and I present the annual plan and budget ahead of your actual approval, so should there be any question or concern about the items in that annual plan and/or budget, it would be able to be dealt with.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Well, thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Most of the group is going to stay up, and I will let Shelley introduce herself, but someone else from CHN will be joining us to talk a little bit about Oakland Housing Link. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Shelley Brinkman. I'm the Director of Property and Asset Management. Have a seat.
Thank you.
And once again, they're going to let me start, and then, once again, I promise to be brief. And this is a repeat for many of you, so I will, for sure, keep it brief, but Community Housing Network was started in 2001, excuse me, as an initiative of Oakland County Community Mental Health at the time. And we were set up to do three things. First, yeah, let me find it. I mean, I know what they are, but I, I don't want to skip too much. I mean, I know what they are, but I don't want to skip too much stuff.
Yes.
Actually, initially, one of the stated desires was that we would start buying up real estate, because Oakland County Community Mental Health didn't want to continue leasing at ever-increasing rates. And we have bought some real estate, but our three core things that we set out to do, and we finally agreed upon with Oakland County CMH, was, which is a lot easier for me, this OCHN thing that, I'm still adjusting to that, but was, one was to do property management for the existing group home inventory, because, shall we say, there were inconsistencies, and there were issues with the maintenance on the homes, and when homes were no longer in service and they had closeouts, there were closeout checks written for $25,000, $35,000 in some cases. So, and we didn't want people living in homes that were not very well-maintained. So we set out to create a consistent leasing system. We set out to reduce the number of group homes, which we'll talk about in a minute. And we set out to make sure that all of the group homes were in good shape. And I believe that we've succeeded in doing that. Secondly, and I had to do some talking, a lot of talking, to get people to agree to this, was to create a Housing Resource Center. Because up until then, if you were a person with a disability looking for a place to live, there were almost no resources available to you. You had no idea how to get a Section 8 voucher, you hadn't, or where to even get on the waiting list. You had no idea, if you were a family member, how you could help your son or daughter move on into independent living after they were done living at your home. There were no informational resources, hardly at all, available on how any of that would work. When we started the Housing Resource Center, it was one person, Kirsten Elliott, and she was getting about four or five calls a day. Last year, the Housing Resource Center got over 24,000 phone calls, unduplicated phone calls. I'm skipping.
22, I know, you're skipping all around, messing me up. 22471, that's how many calls.
Thank you. Sorry about messing you up, but I'm trying to tell a story here, you know? And finally, we were created to help create additional non-group home housing resources, both for the community as a whole, that were consistent with our philosophy, and for the people served by OCHN. And we have succeeded in doing that. Now, is there enough? No, not even close to being enough. And we attested to that by the previous presentation. But we're making progress. We write grants for everything we can possibly get our hands on, even in times of scarce funding. And we've managed to create hundreds of affordable housing units to serve people with disabilities and the community as a whole.
I'm just trying to fit, okay. The last thing I think that you or I could talk to is how everything, what we've talked about in the previous presentation and now, relates to your strategic plan, which is in regards to your housing. So I think that everything we do really ties in and pairs really well with your strategic plan. And this is from your staff. I think the most important thing here is that without stable and safe housing, it's impossible for a person to focus on their mental or physical needs. And with that, we want to really talk about this new project, this new collaboration we have with OCHN, and it's called Oakland Housing Link. So it's a web-based tool that will allow people to go in and find housing choices all throughout Oakland County. Reason I think that CHN is a good fit is because of everything that we've talked about prior to this. But this tool is so, it's really exciting, because we're going to be able to go online with your social worker or yourself, or we're going to have people on staff that also could help you, say your guardian wants to help you, and we can search, and we can search, like, I only want to see the homes that are wheelchair-accessible. I don't want to see the ones that won't fit my needs. I only want to see ones that are close to my family. I only want to see homes that I can have my own bedroom. Or maybe I really like sharing a bedroom, I only want to see those. So you'll have lots of different ways to search the tool to find the housing that meets your needs. Then, well, for the first phase, I'll talk about that. The first phase is 10-1, so coming up really soon. And because it's such a big project, that will just be for the licensed residential group homes. And then, so those people who either live in licensed residential group homes or who want to move into them. So then after that, and another later phase, which we don't have a date at this point, that will be all the people in the other situations, the personal residences, that want to move and find people to live with. So I guess the biggest thing is that you're going to have increased control and choice and transparency. The people are going to be able to have bigger housing options. Right now, if you work at Easter Sales as a support coordinator or case manager, and you want to find housing for someone even within the just the licensed homes, you only really have the options of those direct service providers that Easter Sales works with. So what's going to happen with you guys taking back all those contracts? We're going to put all of these homes in this web-based tool, and now a case manager at Easter Sales will be able to search and find all the homes within Oakland County. They may not have a relationship with a provider yet, but that might be the perfect home for a person. And then they'll develop those relationships, and it opens it up to a lot more housing choices for people.
I want to build a little bit on what Shelley just said. I talked a little bit about when we first started out with the Housing Resource Center. And even back then, we had envisioned something like this. We didn't necessarily, and I still don't understand the technology behind this, quite honestly, but we wanted to put control in the hands of people who were using whatever available housing sector is, and both that's within the mental health system and ultimately outside of it. We already track when Section 8 vouchers, that's not the correct term for them currently, but that's what they are, Section 8 vouchers are becoming available, and help people actually fill out applications. So for the first time, they're able to get a place in line, where otherwise they would have been shut out. Or we track where, when there's a vacant apartment that's wheelchair-accessible. Or we track when there's a subsidized unit available in an apartment complex, whether we're associated with it or not. So the whole notion here is ultimately to create an integrated system where people can get access to the best, most up-to-date housing information about what's available to them, and have choices about where they're going to go, because the resources are still so scarce that we want to make sure that the folks served by OCHN have a leg up and have a chance at getting quality, affordable housing. That's the whole goal of this. So it's part of a much bigger picture that we're working on, and this is just one opportunity that's been created by the fact that OCHN is now bringing in all these residential contracts.
So how will people get to this link? Will it be by calling OCHN?
Well, I think it can happen a number of different ways. It is possible that people will contact OCHN directly, but the intention and the hope is that case managers and supports coordinators will be working directly with individuals served. That's sort of the expectation. And that people themselves can access it, or that they can access it with the assistance of their supports coordinator or case manager. Or there are staff at CHN who also will provide that assistance to people served and their supports coordinator or case manager.
So will this link be on our website?
So it'll be a web-based, it'll be web-based. I'm viewing it as sort of a, I keep calling it Zillow, because that's what works in my head, but of all of the available housing, and ultimately, it will be housing that's available to people, whether it's licensed or unlicensed, and who receive services in Oakland County.
How do we anticipate rolling this out, making sure that social workers and everybody know?
We've been in direct contact with the core providers and the direct service providers, and we're working with them. We're doing user testing. We're making sure that this works for them. We're making sure that we're talking to the providers so that they know to talk to us about what the homes are like. And then we have two staff that will be able to, you know, reach out and get more specific when we have a person we're working with. And then to roll it out, though, we're sending, right now, just, we're calling, we're doing a lot of calls, getting the information on those licensed homes. And then we're doing emails that are going to start going out with all of our, like an email blast of like, don't forget, this is coming, this is what it's going to do, get people excited. And then we'll start, and we'll do another email with screenshots of the system. It won't be up and running until 10-1, but we can keep giving people more and more information about it until that time. And then we are working hand-in-hand with your market, our communications department and ours, and right now, there's just waiting on last-minute approval for, to roll out at something. Christina's here.
Our communications teams are working closely in terms of making sure that relevant information gets out to the network as a whole, whether it's the core provider, agency, direct service providers, individuals who receive services. And then internally, we're also finalizing policy, protocol, procedure that will sort of formalize the process and that relationship between OCHN, CHN, and the core provider agencies.
Just wondered, I run into this in long-term care facilities, where people are transitioning out, not knowing where to go, not knowing housing. So do you reach out to also the Embusman State Program and other areas with long-term care, so that people in the community know about this?
We have not at this point. Right now, as Shelley indicated, we've really been focused on making sure that we are prepared and have available housing options readily available for the specialized residential settings, starting 10-1. And then we will look to further develop OHL to include other types of living arrangements. And so that could be something that we look at in the future.
I think it sounds very exciting, and it's certainly needed.
You just indicated, were you talking about people who already are receiving services through OCHN in the long term?
Yes.
So then their case manager, that would be my, like, how I would view it, is that their case manager or support coordinator will be knowledgeable of this, and then would reach out with them or their family, and then talk to us, and then we'll help them. So that, and we have like a prioritization tool on it, so when we get a call, we'll ask a series of questions that will help us prioritize the most urgent needs of people that need to be housed.
Thank you. Any further questions? Does that conclude, or?
The only other thing I was going to mention is that we do have some other benefits to this. On the front page, before you have to log in, because it is a secure system, but for people that don't have a, you know, access to do the searches, there will still be some resources online for, like, housing-related resources, back to your website, back to our website. We envision that your website will also link to this website, so we'll make sure it's easy to find. And then we also did put in a, it's called a concept brief to the Michigan Developmental Disabilities Council to try to obtain some more funding. So in our vision, if we obtain the funding, is to do a getting-my-own-address, like, videos for people on that front page, without having to log in, find out more information about housing, so they make good decisions about what kind of housing would suit them best. And then also to do more landlord outreach. It's a huge need right now, though there's not enough affordable housing. And if we had some more landlords on board, maybe try to get them to do some set-asides for people who are low, and just to teach them why an inclusive community is better for everyone. So we're hoping to, you know, make this bigger as time goes by.
When do you see doing Phase 2, if everything goes according to your wish list?
It's been a pretty fluid process. So Phase 2, we're doing sort of simultaneously with Phase 1, knowing that people will continue to move, regardless of where they're moving and for what reasons they might be moving. But the web-based portal itself is going to be primarily focused, 10-1, on those specialized res, and then specialized residential homes. And then we'll start getting into the more, into the weeds a little bit more about the other types of apartments that may be able to be included, other types of homes, you know, we'll run into some conversations about, obviously, if it's a family home and nobody else can live there, that, you know, that's not going to be a home that might be included. And OHL is an option, but if we have an individual living in a home and they have another bedroom, and they're able to have a roommate, then that would be a home that we could make available on that portal for people to access. So we're, we haven't really gotten into the weeds yet. I would imagine we'll get into the weeds on that probably around October 2nd, but it's been pretty fluid throughout, yeah. So we are really excited about it before we, if the board has additional questions, we're very excited about it. CHN has been amazing at facilitating the project and making sure that we're continuing to move forward. The hope and the intention is that we can come back, they can come back at a later date once the portal is a little bit more ready for primetime maybe, and actually show it to the board.
Wonderful. Okay, thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, Kathleen? Oh.
I just have an additional comment. There it is. We are really excited about this, because we certainly believe in people having their own homes, controlling their front doors. This is personal empowerment. But I think what's really neat about this tool, it's not only looking at what type of housing is available, linking people up with possible roommates, but it really shows the whole community. Where are the parks? Where do the buses stop? Where are the churches? So it really builds into this user-friendly tool, the option for really, for people to really take a look at the community they want to live in, how close it might be to family, what resources are available to them. So it will only continue to grow as we refine the tool, people use it, give us the feedback that's needed.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Next, we'll have jail medication-assisted treatment. You're so kind as to introduce yourself. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Christina Nicholas. I'm Director of Substance Use Disorder Service here, here at Oakland Community Health Network, and my partner here.
I am Executive Lieutenant Melissa McClellan, from the Sheriff's Department, Oakland County, and also the jail administrator.
Thank you.
Thank you. So you've heard about this in previous presentations, about the fact that we were creating this program, and that we wanted to do it because of the significant need and related to the opiate epidemic. So we have been running this program now just shy of six months, so we thought we'd give you an update. And we have ourselves a little timer here, so we're going to try to really stick to our allotted time, and that will remind ourselves. So if you see us look down, it's because we're looking at our timer. We've condensed an hour-and-a-half presentation. We presented at the Michigan Association of Treatment Court Professionals Conference earlier on this program, and we've condensed our presentation to 30 minutes. We're really planning on that. Okay, so first and foremost, just a recap as to why we wanted to initiate this project. We know that we're in the midst of a very serious opioid epidemic, drug deaths, overdose deaths have now become the leading cause of accidental death in this country, and it really affects every single community in some way, shape, or form. So in Michigan, we rank 14th in the nation for overdose deaths. In 2016, you can see, we had 2,347 people that died of overdose, and that's more deaths than car accidents, which really was the leading cause of accidental death for probably the last, I believe, like, 30 years until this epidemic. In 2016, we had 165 opioid deaths. We've recently received the 2017, and it almost doubled in opioid deaths, and that's largely due to fentanyl and carfentanil. So it really told us we hadn't reached the tipping point yet, and that we needed to have additional programming to meet the needs of our community. I will say that we have some preliminary results, and I was at a meeting last Friday with the Medical Examiner's Office, and to date, running the numbers compared to last year this time, we are lower in overdose deaths this year. We will see the final, obviously, after January of 2019, so they can tabulate that. But right now, it's on target that we are seeing fewer deaths. So medication-assisted treatment, I've talked about that as well before. It is considered. It is considered one of the best practices in terms of delivering services to people with opiate use disorders. It really helps with the cravings that a person has and also with withdrawal symptoms. And there are three main medications, as I've talked about before, that are FDA-approved, and that is buprenorphine, or sometimes people know that as the brand name, suboxone, methadone, and naltrexone, which is also, the brand name for that is vivitrol. And then there's life-saving drugs like naloxone that keep people alive and allow them to continue to access treatment. I talked about the fact that these are FDA-approved medications. One thing that's extremely important to note is that with these medications, there must be behavioral health services in combination with receiving the medication. That is where you see the best outcomes. So psychosocial approaches, it's really the non-biological aspect of an opiate use disorder, addressing and working with a person's behavior, emotions, thought processes, interactions within their social environments. This is an evidence-based practice. You'll see, I won't reiterate the definition of an evidence-based practice, but that is largely that a great deal of research has been done, looking at the outcomes and what works for individuals with opiate use disorders, or any best practice for any population that we serve. Why medication-assisted treatment in corrections? One of the things that we know is that this opiate use disorders, or substance use disorders in general, are very, is a very complex brain disease. And medication-assisted treatment is showing us, the science and the outcomes are showing us, that with the medications in conjunction with the behavioral health services, we are seeing better outcomes. When you provide services in the jail, in 2013, the National Association of Treatment Court Professionals had done a study, and they found that upwards of 95% of individuals who were given a referral for substance use services in jail or prison did not follow through with services. So the reason why you want to start services in a jail or prison setting is because it does increase the likelihood of follow-through in treatment, because you're beginning the services before they're even released. In our program, we worked on this with the Oakland County Sheriff's Office for about a year in preparation. This comprehensive program is the only one currently in Michigan. There's about four in the United States. And there are other smaller programs, but this comprehensive program is the first, so it took us quite a while to create it from scratch. The staffing for this program definitely has the physician and several nurses. There are therapists that provide the behavioral health treatment, both groups and individual services. The peer recovery coach is paramount, not only to provide support while a person is in jail, but also to help a person as they are released from jail and to make it to that next appointment in the community-based service program. We also have a coordinator position that is 20 hours a week, and that is a jail staff person, and she coordinates everything. That is a very crucial position because a lot of releases need to be signed, the physicians need to talk to each other, and she makes sure all of that happens and that it is very clearly outlined. So important. And then, of course, our access center, because we have access staff going into the jail to screen individuals to ensure they're appropriate for the program. How are we funded? When we started this, this was going to be funded with public act II funds. And that, those are our local funds, the most flexible fund source. You have to utilize a licensed program, and so that was our intention, to have our providers import the program. That is exactly what's going on now, Sacred Heart Health and Wellness Center. They are a medication-assisted treatment program. They are the provider that is in the jail and delivering the services. However, the state-targeted response grant, while we were developing this concept, the state-targeted response grant really offered a great deal of money to address the opioid epidemic. And so we decided that we would apply for the grant and see if this was a concept that they would approve. They did approve the concept, and so right now, we are funding this under the state-targeted response grant. And we, of course, have to have a sustainability plan, which was already built because we intended on using public act II funds. I'm happy to say that the Department of Health and Human Services has asked for all of our protocols because they feel this is an innovative program, and they want to see if it can be replicated around the state, so we're very excited about that. So how a program like this works is with very good partnerships. And I will say, we have an amazing partnership with the Oakland County Sheriff's Office. I don't think that that's lost on any of you. You know that from previous presentations. We have our jail alliance with Support Program. We fund the naloxone for our deputies so they can prescribe the life-saving drug when someone's in the midst of an overdose and they come on the scene to that. We worked with them on their rides-to-recovery program, where sheriff's deputies will drive a person to the Resource and Crisis Center, to our sober support unit, to receive services if needed. And then, of course, the jail medication-assisted treatment program. That has been crucial. There's no way we could have done this without working closely with the Sheriff's Office. And with that, I'm at nine minutes and 14 seconds, so I'm going to turn it over to Lieutenant McClellan.
In response to the rise in the opioid epidemic, Christina was also mentioned the naloxone program. There's been such a shift in law enforcement, and in our road patrol, we service over 15 different areas. And having those naloxone kits inside those patrol units, our officers responded first on scene. That's prior to any emergency services. In response to their patrol services, they were first on scene and recognized that there was a need to administer naloxone treatments. Since the program began in 2017, our recent stats, as of June, they administered 166 doses, just our officers, before any other law, any other medical services arrived unseen. Where 154 of those were survivors. And to think without that happening, without those kits being in those patrol cars, what could have happened? So outside of the shift within law enforcement, to the point where we are riding, our law enforcement officers are riding around with the naloxone kits to respond to the rise in the opioid epidemic, there's also been a shift within the Corrections Division. We are treating more individuals for detoxing process because of the opioid rise. There are more levels of contacts from the inmates that we have to service for your medical services, the daily monitoring, the daily care, needs for lending, something as simple as lending and bedding exchanges. All those are on the rise, along with other sanitation and cleaning needs. We have increased housing for lower-level bottom bunk. This is all, there's been a shift that law enforcements have seen, not outside, but also within the jail systems. And also the increase of security from the attempted smugglings through the mails, on the persons. So this is what we are now being faced with. Now we've talked about some of the things that the law enforcement and the jails are now seeing. We need to talk about why there was such a need for a medication-assisted treatment program within our jail systems. We've already emphasized that we have had a rise in addictions because of opioid use. There's over 2.3 million people in America that's in our jail systems. United States have most heavily incarcerated areas where we are seeing the rise in the prison systems and the jail systems. With that being said, over 65% of those who are entering jails and prisons are addicted to some sort of substance use. And few provided treatment options are into jail systems and the prison systems. Looking at that and recognizing that you're having a 65% increase of those who are incarcerated in jails and our prisons who are not receiving the treatment, there's a craving for opioid does not end once they're incarcerated. Once you're incarcerated, it does not, it takes away the drug from being physically available, but it does not take away the craving for it. The tolerance level, although they are incarcerated, the tolerance level is reduced. While they're outside in the, in the community and they may be using opioids, their tolerance level is on the rise. So soon after release, that's where you're going to see most of your overdose. That's where you're going to see most of your deaths, because you're trying to use that same amount of drug to reach that same amount of tolerance and that, feel that same amount of effect from the amount of drugs that they were using prior to incarceration. Medication-assisted treatment in the jails reduces that barrier so they can continue not only having treatment, but also offer treatment and recovery services. There's been a reduction, there's evidence that any medication-assisted treatments within a jail system have proven that it reduces the amount of overdoses. It also reduces the amount of deaths. As Christina has also already mentioned, we have evidence that those deaths are being reduced. There's a decrease in recidivism rate, because if, once a person is treated and they maintain their treatment, whether they're inside the jail systems, and once they are now released out into the communities, crime level is then reduced, and the rise in recidivism rates are also reduced. We're increasing that continuity of care by allowing them to have their treatments available within the jail systems. Prior to implementing this project or this medication-assisted treatment within the jail systems, there was a lot of support that we had to have. We had to have the buy-in from both the Sheriff's Office and also Oakland Community Health Systems. And we would, we would like to thank you for that support, as well as within the Sheriff's When we began our medication-assisted treatment, we had to basically look at a criteria because we wanted to start a pilot. And when you first start a project, a program, especially a pilot, you don't want to look at something so large to where you can't maintain it. We wanted to build something where we are providing an evidence-based program and something that was going to be beneficial for those who are in need of treatment, and also something that was going to be sustained. So we had to look at our criteria. It definitely had to meet the American Society of Addiction Medication. Inmates had to be medically cleared, and they had to be cleared for, by a MAP provider. And with the use of methadone, one of the most criteria that is very important to mention is that the methadone providers that were approved for use within our programs had to be approved MAP providers. And any of the people that are accepted into the project or the program, they had to already have been on methadone with and open with one of those providers that were approved for the program. Our medication-assisted program in the jail, we do not start anyone on methadone. They have already, have been prescribed methadone from a medically-approved provider prior to entering the jail systems.
I just want to add, the reason why Lieutenant McClellan's emphasizing that so much is because there are very strict federal and state rules that prohibit beginning or inducting the methadone unless it's in an approved medication-assisted treatment facility. And so you are allowed to do what's called emergency or gas dosing, and that is why any of our individuals that are on methadone have already been prescribed and receiving services and taking methadone.
Another criteria consideration was that we do not have any pregnant females in our medication-assisted treatment program. That is not to single out the pregnant females. We have a separate program that provides treatment for them. Anyone that's a participant have to comply, I'm sorry, comply with any of the jail and the, also the medication-assisted treatment rules. There were expectations that had to be met, and those were that we had to clearly identify those who are opioid users, and that's from self-identification, and also from those who may have been placed on a recent detox program. Any one of our participants go through a medical screening and assessment. They're assessed and screened from our coordinators. They're assessed and screened from our access, and they're also screened and assessed from our medical providers. They also have to sign a consent, a release of information. And in order for there to have been a, such a success so far, we had to make, make sure we were maintaining the coordination of care that's within the jail, OCHN, our Sacred Heart, and also our medical contractors. Part of the screening process, the access screening process, is where we are screening individuals to make sure that they are eligible for the program. There's also a lab and a drug screening, medical evaluations. As Christina has already mentioned, we have peer recovery coaches, one-on-one, and also group counseling. There's also discharge planning. There are, for anyone who is coming into the jail system, they are provided the medication-assisted treatment medications while they're in the jail system. But we don't want to end there. Once they are released into the community, we want them to be able to continue with their treatment for their medications. So that coordination of care and that follow-up care out into the community, that follows them from the jail systems out into their community, whether they have been linked up with a community provider that consists of a medication-assisted treatment, that's part of our approved providers, or whether they are going to their own treatment or their medical provider. One of the expectations that we wanted to ensure that we were maintaining is that we wanted to provide an evidence-based program. So we made sure that we had set measurable outcomes that we wanted to achieve. Putting together a medication-assisted treatment program means that we were allowing controlled substance to be brought into a jail facility. So of course, there were concerns and issues out there that a lot of jails are facing. But the need for the treatment, we had to consider this project. And the security of introducing that means that we had to implement some safety practices. There were housing requirements. A jail system like ours consists of different layers, where we have direct supervision. We also still have the linear-style jail, where you have anywhere from minimum to your maximum, maximum one prisoners. So those are some of the things that we had to consider as well. We had to have acceptance from the custody staff. We increased job duties. There was ongoing training. There's policy creation and implementation. All these things we had to consider. All those things were put in place. We also included an advisory board to oversee the project. Between Oakland Community Health Network and Oakland County Sheriff's Office, our medication-assisted treatment program includes an advisory board, where we meet regularly, oversee the program. We evaluate and consistently reevaluate some of the criterias that we put in place, some of the expectations. We have recommendations on expansions. We also review our evidence-based measurable outcomes. In order to provide a framework for any future programs, we wanted to make sure the advisory board was in place to take a good-hearted look at what we were doing. Some of the outcomes that I want to talk about, we began the project, the medication-assisted treatment, February 12th of this year, just a little over six months. Since then, we have screened over 618 individuals, 366 males and 232 females. We actively, as of a couple days ago, we actively have 23 active participants in the program. It's important to mention that our capacity was set at 24. And what that is, is that's an open-ended program to where when one person is released, is no longer in the program, we can then accept someone else. So it's not that we are only going up to 24. Therefore, we have had 82 participants. Therefore, we have had 82 participants since February 12th who have come through the program. And we currently have 23 that's active as of this date. While we have a comprehensive criteria of who's eligible for the program, who are not eligible for the program, we have had 53 decline in participation. Medication-assisted treatment, the doses that we have administered thus far, we've administered over 962 methadone treatments. We've also over 1,244 Suboxone. And we've administered three to four administrations, administrators of Vivertral.
If you have any, Micaiah?
Another question, just a comment. I really appreciate the Sheriff's Department for being visionary along with OCHN because we're treating people like real people instead of animals. So I just want to commend you on the work that you're doing because it doesn't just affect the person, it affects the whole family.
Thank you. No other questions? Eleanor?
I also want to thank you for that presentation. I think when you continually read all the material that we see day in and day out about what's happened in the country, really, it's a good feeling to know we have a very sound program working in the jails with the opioid persons. I think my major concern is how do you really follow up once they're discharged? And whose responsibility? And who really follows the data on this program? Is it jail system? Is it partially Oakland County? Because I think the follow-up to me is critical.
I would agree with you 100%. And so why the recovery coach is so important and the jail coordinator is so important is for that follow-through, to make sure everything gets to the next provider. And the recovery coach to really support the person in getting to that appointment. So what's happening is we are following through and can see, did they show up to their next appointment? And what I can tell you is we're starting to look at the preliminary six-month results. It's extremely better than the only 5% that follow through with the treatment court study that was done with treatment. It's far higher than that. We're seeing very good outcomes. And so the jail coordinator and then the substance use SNT staff work very closely together to look at that, but it's also in our electronic system. And so we can continue to monitor and follow the individuals that came through the jail and then out to our providers again. I do want to note one thing. You'll see that there was a lot of people screened and a lot of people did not meet requirements for the program. And in anticipation of a question with that, I do want to explain to you why. And the largest reason is there were extremely high amounts of individuals that were from different counties. And so we couldn't service them. We wouldn't be able to continue to service them. They would need to be serviced by the county with which they were from. And then there was another very high rate of individuals who had warrants or what are called holds in other counties as well, which meant as soon as they were released from the Oakland County Jail, they will be picked up to go to another jail. And so you wouldn't want to start someone in a program and on medication that you know you can't follow through with. And so that's our largest barriers. It's people that are not returning to Oakland County and were not Oakland County citizens in the first place, which is why you see such a high number that did not enter the program. And one thing I can say is so amazing, Eleanor, with regard to monitoring those outcomes, is before, when a person was receiving services at a medication-assisted treatment clinic for methadone in particular, and they were incarcerated for whatever reason, sometimes it's very old charges that the person is now, has turned themselves in and said, you know, as part of my recovery, I really want to address these outstanding charges, other reasons. Sometimes they commit a crime while they're in the midst of treatment. For whatever reason, they would come in and they would have to stop all treatment programming. And there's not a lot of follow-through when that's happened. It's not good for them physically. It's not good for a person emotionally. And to be able to continue that, for the doctor from Sacred Heart to speak to the treating physician that was working there, for them to know what happened, and then for them to be able to transfer back to the clinic at which they've chosen to go to is a huge success. Because oftentimes, those are the individuals that will be released from jail and overdose, and it's a very negative outcome, as you can imagine. So I did want to add that as well.
Thank you. Any further questions?
Hearing none, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our next presentation is on dashboards.
Hi, I'm Marquita Massey. I'm the Director of Quality and Provider Network Management.
Francisco Gamboa, Service Network Analyst.
Steve Zulissa, Director of Finance.
Jenny Ballas, Director of Business Intelligence and Applications. I'll start, just to give you a little background on dashboards. We've been using our iDashboard tools since 2011. We did an RFP back in, an RFP back in 2010, and we implemented the system in 2011. So we've been using it for about seven years. We've grown the tool a lot. In the beginning, it was mainly used here locally at OCHN. But now we have about 100 dashboards and we use it and our providers use it. So they have access the same way we do. And we also have it in our annual plan. We have a goal that we're going to continue the development and use of dashboards and reports to monitor data related to people we serve, service models, utilization, cost. So we have that in our goal and we continue to build the dashboards around that. Why do we use dashboards? One of the main reasons is for one source of truth. So prior to using dashboards, a lot of times we would have separate reports, people would be using different versions. Now we have one dashboard and we can all access it and we all know that we're looking at the same information. And it also eliminates the individual delivery of reports. As I said prior to that, we would have to maybe email out each individual report to all the providers or internally. Now they can all go to the dashboard tool and access that same report there. We also use it to monitor data integrity. We use a lot of dashboards that look at data that might have to be reported to us in a certain way or to the state and data that requires certain completion rates. We have a lot with the state that require, you know, things to be completed at a 95% completion. So we use a lot of dashboards to monitor that and then we both have access to that. Also with identifying and monitoring trends, being able to collect data over time and present it in a dashboard allows staff to monitor that on a daily, weekly basis and easily identify if something's going up or down without having to request individual reports. And then the last thing is real-time access to the data. Pretty much all the information that flows through our warehouse is, you know, maybe a couple of days old, so the dashboards get updated on a nightly basis. And then that's reflective in the dashboard for everyone that's using those and they have real-time data with that. Why do we use dashboards? One of the really cool things about our dashboard tool is that we can create one dashboard and then it is filtered based on the person logging in. So if we have a dashboard, we can view it here as a total, seeing all providers at one time. If a provider logs in, they'll only see their data. So again, that eliminates multiple reports. It allows us to have one dashboard that everyone can log into and use at the same time. And then we also have the ability to drill down. So a lot of our dashboards require providers or internal staff to monitor that. And then we can filter down to specific individual data that needs to be corrected or reviewed. And it's kind of a one-stop shop for all the corrections with that data piece. How are our dashboards populated? So we have, these are the three main areas that we get data from. One is our AEHR, is our Administrative and Electronic Healthcare Record, which we use very heavily here in many departments, you know, UM, our Customer Service, Quality, all use our system. And then we also have providers that use our EHR. So we get all the data from there. We also get provider data files. We have providers, organizations that we deal with that do not use our system. So we have created files that come over nightly to our system that are merged in with the other data we have. And then lastly, for data that's not collected in our EHR or in another system, we use Google Forms or other type of forms to collect that data from outside sources. Here's an example of one. It's been one that we started requiring to report to the state BHTADS, which is Behavior Health Treatment Episode Data. And we started using a dashboard to monitor this because it's something that's required and every individual that served requires this data set to be sent. It was a big undertaking. It was a big project that took a couple of years to get everything collected and reported to the state. So this dashboard, for one, allows us to monitor it at OCHN to see how we're doing. It also allows our providers to go in and access the records that they still need to update. So it worked really well. You know, in the beginning, it was making sure everyone had a record. And now, you know, with the state, we're at our 95% completion rate for BHTADS for Oakland. So that was my last slide. So I'll pass it to Marquita.
Oh, we also use a dashboard for compiling one of our performance indicators. This is Table 1. This is the indicator that is specific to what happens at Common Ground. It measures the time from the person presents at Common Ground until the time the decision is made whether or not to hospitalize an individual. So what's really great about this is that the provider, Common Ground in this case, can look at their data, their performance, to see where they are at any given time so that they can address any data integrity issues, speak to staff that may be having any kind of a performance issues and address the problem. So this is the dashboard. You can see from this, at this particular time, they were below the 95% standard. With this dashboard, you can also drill down. So this is a screenshot of the actual drill down. So from here, you can see the cases. You can see the presentation time, the welcome form stop time. This data that you're looking at here has had some of the personally identifying data redacted, so you don't have any names there, our case numbers. But what's important to note is the column M, all the way over to your right, you can see the time that it took to disposition. So anything that's over 180 minutes in this column, the provider can drill down to find out what might have been the cause of this problem. Oftentimes, it could be a data entry error where AM was entered instead of PM and that would miscalculate and would have to go in and the record would have to be corrected. And then sometimes there are actual instances when performance is beyond the 180 minutes. But what's good about this is they can actually look at the individual performance of each record before it gets to the end of the quarter. This slide here is another screenshot of the same dashboard that staff at Common Ground can use. It looks at three different indicators. It looks at the, all the way over to your right, you'll see the time that the welcome form started to the time the individual was presented to triage. So we can take, Common Ground can take a look at the average times it took for that. The next slide, the next graph in the middle looks at the average minutes for the actual triage. And then the slide, the graph all the way over to my left is the actual time that it has taken for the actual emergency assessment to take place. So all these tools together are helpful to the staff at Common Ground because they can really drill down to find out where, what the causes of problems could be in regards to not helping them to, you know, ensuring that they're meeting the indicator. And the next slide, I think, is, is it Steve? Okay.
Dashboards have been integral in our evolution towards the service models and value-based reimbursement. So for example, as you know, payment triggers are defined in the service models. For example, in the ACT model, a provider can earn a certain payment if a certain service is provided during a month to an individual. And so through the dashboards, we can see and measure those services reported as encounters. So then dashboards are updated on a weekly basis with the most recent encounter data. And this information is visible to the providers and to OCHN at the same time. So everybody knows where, what the status is of those payments earned. And then additionally, we do quarterly reviews with the providers to discuss payments earned versus reported expenses, to explore that and to help answer questions. The next slide is a picture of our ACT dashboard. And this is not intended for you to actually see any of the numbers out there, but just as an example. One of the greatest functions of the dashboards that I'm surprised Jenny failed to mention was that you can maximize any of those panels, so it takes up the full screen. It makes it a lot easier to see. In the upper left is simply, it's a bar chart and the bar indicates, in this example, the number of individuals served through the ACT program by any particular provider. So that's how we can all tell what payments have been earned. So it's real-time information and I think it's really helpful to the service models. And that's all I had on that.
Okay, so the next dashboard is a screenshot of our Individual Supported Employment dashboard. As Jenny mentioned, this is a very nice feature to have because it is a single source of truth. So they have access, we have access. And when we implemented our new values-based outcomes purchasing for our vocational service models that departed from the traditional fee-for-service, having a Google form, another mechanism outside of our current electronic health record was critical since this is how data is captured and reimbursement is paid for the providers. So these dashboards have really been a lifesaver, if you will. And this one here is looking at Individual Supported Employment. Each provider can go in here and they have a poll down, so they don't see the other provider's data. They have access to their own data, so they have the ability to track. And again, they see what we see. And so if we look at the top bars, the turquoise ones, those are the months since we implemented the Individual Supported Employment. And so you can kind of see the reimbursement and how that's tracked. To the left, and as Steve mentioned, it's not intended for you to see. I was going to make a joke and say, oh, you can't see that? But I probably shouldn't. Anyway, so that's the rates that are built in because there is an algorithm behind here that calculates based on a couple of factors, hours worked and the acuity. And so we have that all laid out here. And as was previously mentioned, you can drill down to see the individual-level data that's been entered. So if you're a provider and you're unsure and you have a question about the reimbursement or possibly something as specific as that detail record, individual record level detail, you have the ability to do that. And again, we're looking at the same screen. The next slide is Supported Employment again. This is our IPS, Individual Placement and Support, or the Evidence-Based Supported Employment Model. So we also made a switch in how we reimburse this. And again, we departed from the fee-for-service and so it necessitated us creating a dashboard. And again, we departed from the fee-for-service, and so it necessitated us creating a dashboard and a different payment mechanism outside of Odin. So, we have five milestones. And so, if we look at the five charts here, each of those lines is representing individual months for particular milestones. And the upper-left column, that's the total reimbursement. And we have fidelity built in here as well, so there's a reward to attain a higher level of fidelity because there's a correlation between fidelity and improved outcomes. So, we want to make sure that the model emphasizes that. So, again, these are relatively new to us, and as Jenny mentioned, we have about 100 or so dashboards. So, these were two additions to the dashboard family, and these went live January 1st of this year. And they're, they're very easy to use, so they've been a great tool. And as I mentioned, a lifesaver as we've departed away from some of the fee-for-service models.
Any questions?
Just have one. I, I have been a regular user of it, and I know that we can get to it from our, from our board website, but it doesn't always work, and I've sent some emails in. So, didn't know if we're moving away from the product or we're gonna stick with it even if we could go away from Google.
I mean, you should still be able to always get into it. I mean, it could be the password or something like that. And at this point, yeah, we're still using it even if we get away from Google.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for your present.
Oh, yes. Steve?
Just gonna comment, there's, the board can only get to certain dashboards.
It won't. It's giving me a 404. It doesn't let me go in at all. I don't know if others have gone there.
Usually, it's been, the account has been locked. So, you've, we just have to reset it.
Have to reset it and?
Reset it.
Thank you.
Yes.
Dr. Hunt?
Thank you. But I have one simple question. This is all a lot of work, and, and developing a dashboard can be quite, you know, labor-intensive. But how does it improve or what impact and how does it improve life or the outcome for an individual? How does it help us in that?
I can speak to how it impacts the staff at Common Ground because it's an efficiency tool. It, the, it reduces the amount of time staff would have to take and manually go through records to verify what's needed to compile the performance indicators. So, if they're using less time preparing that report, there's more time that they can actually use to serving people. So, it's a time saver in regards to that.
Also, we have other dashboards too, and I can speak on the vocational side and some in development that will be used for, and, and I think I mentioned a little bit, the providers to track their progress. So, it's also a motivator too. So, if we have dialogue with them and we're meeting with them to see how things are going, especially when we talk about increased time in the community and community inclusion, it's a very nice tool that we have at our disposal, especially for some of the smaller providers where they may not have the I T or I S presence to capture this data. So, it, it really is helpful in those situations too for, for program improvement.
Malchiah?
I just had a question about the performance indicator, Table 1. There's one, I don't know if you looked at this before, but it's like 3,000.
Yes.
Why would a person have to take that long for an intake?
Well, most likely, that's an error. We do have individuals that leave services and come back into services. So, this would be a record that Common Ground would have to drill down on to find out exactly what occurred. So, the dashboard is good for that. Those kind of outliers pop out right away and they can drill down.
To that, I'm sorry, Annette. With access to more information and more real-time information, you can more quickly spot trends in service levels and other information that I think leads to better decisions and better outcomes.
I was gonna say, the executive committee met earlier today, and we did talk about, we have changed to different contract methodology, different payment methodology, different service models. Lot of these dashboards that they reviewed are making sure that the providers are getting paid, the encounter data is getting in because from the business model, that's very concerning for the providers. But in future board meetings, we are gonna be sharing with the payment models that heavily incentivize community, are we seeing people get into the community more? So, we have that on the agenda for the September and October board meetings to bring it more to the person level, have the service models indeed impact quality of life and community participation, all those things we wanna promote for the people we serve. So, you'll get a lot more detail on that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your present. Oh, I'm sorry, Malchiah.
You guys probably aren't the ones to ask, but I've always wondered about the encounters, how they're logged. Because one of the questions I had early on was with peers. And if a peer, and you pay per month, per encounter, right? Or you're not the ones to ask, Steve?
Rough characterization, yes.
Okay. So, if a person sees a person more than once during the month, will they get paid twice or just the one time covers all of the encounters for the month?
Good question, and it's totally dependent on how it's defined in the service model. I can speak, for example, for the ACT program. If there's one encounter, that's a one service that's provided, that would trigger the payment for the month. If there's two services provided, that would still trigger the one payment for the month for that individual served.
That's about all of this that I don't understand, just going back to peers. Because if it's set up this way, why would a peer do groups? Because normally, groups are like four to six weeks long. And if you're meeting every week, but you only get paid one time, then how is that beneficial? That's the part I've never understood. So, I guess what I'm requesting is a better understanding of the models.
You know, I, we talked about when we're developing our agendas, that we did have some space open. How about if we have a presentation specifically on peers and how the new service models and payment models impact? Because we definitely don't want to disincentivize that essential support for people. So, we'll do a presentation to make sure that we're on target with that. You know what? We'll look at the one, I think it was one of the committee hole meetings where we needed to fill content. Yeah, so that'll be a good topic.
Are we all done? Okay. Thank you very much. Our next presentation is building the FY '19 budget.
Our goal with this presentation is to give you the 30,000-foot view of kind of what finance is doing in preparation for getting the fiscal year '19 budget together and kind of that process that we go through. So, the slide you have in front of you now is just kind of an outline of some of the key points that we're gonna go over. We want to make sure that you understand that the first part of us starting this annual plan and strategic plan process is really looking at where are we at with our visions, our vision and guiding principles? What do we have in the strategic plan that we're planning to implement in this fiscal year? And then ultimately, the annual plan that we're, we're planning to work on this fiscal year. So, it really all does tie together with the strategic and annual plan process every year. So, that's kind of a process that starts before we actually start to put numbers onto things, is talking through with Kathleen and the other, other team, teammates that are, what, what things do we have going on? What goals and, and what funding do we need to make sure are, we're accounting for? And what changes to service delivery and whatnot is being expected in the next fiscal year? So, as you all know, one of our primary goals of the last few years has been the implementation of outcome-based service models. And those are intended to not only impact outcomes, so quality of care, but also to deliver consistent service and pay consistently for services, but also create efficiencies. And so, that's a lot of what you see with us going through pulling in delegated contracts and pulling in delegated functions, redoing service models. So, for example, the employment service models took some historical variance with funding amounts and made it all consistent. So, a lot of those things have taken a lot of time, but those are all things that we, we talk through and think through in preparation for every annual plan and budget so that we kind of think through what changes in the next fiscal year and what things do we need to incorporate into the, the, the numbers in order to account for some of the things we're implementing. So, outside of just thinking about the internal changes that we're doing, we go through the process of looking at the changes in the appropriations for the year. So, the appropriations are the amounts that the, that the state and the legislature has decided they're funding the P I H P Behavioral Health System for the year. And that's specific to fund sources. You, you've seen me talk about before, line by line, what the differences are in the different funding sources and kind of the appropriation changes. One of the big ones this fiscal year is going to be autism. Autism had a pretty material impact this fiscal year coming up. We were thinking we might get a general fund reduction, but as you guys know, that that's been kind of tabled, at least in the short term. We've seen a little bit of an increase in substance use funding and then other things. So, we go through fund source by fund source and kind of take what we know in the interim and put numbers to that as fast as we can, once, once it's been voted on. And then, we fine-tune that even more once we have the actual rate certification letters. So, the legislature approves the appropriation amounts, and then those are used to actually create the rate certification letters, which I won't get into all of Steve's detail, but then starts us to, us to have the ability to build the rates and the revenue for the fiscal year. So, we also, of course, look at other funding, which is typically just our local funding, which hasn't changed for as long as I can remember. Grant funding changes a little bit every year. Now, we will have, this fiscal year, we will have rent that will be a new revenue stream for us and any other funding streams that we think are gonna come up in the fiscal year.
So, to drill a little bit more into projecting the Medicaid revenues, as you know, these are, this is capitated funding. And just to clarify upfront, because a lot of people get, do get this mixed up, we receive a capitation of per member per month for every Medicaid enrollee in the county, whether we serve them or not. So, that's really important to keep in mind. Our Medicaid revenues are roughly broken down into DAB, which is Disabled, Aged and Blind, TANF, Temporary Aid for Needy Families, and then H M P, which is the Healthy Michigan Plan. And those are all capitated Medicaid revenues. So, projecting the Medicaid revenues is a very detailed process. I'm gonna just talk about some of the various cells, which are different subcategories of capitation within the funding itself. So, for example, the capitation rates are split between state plan services, alternative B3 services, and also autism services. They're also split out into cells based on age groups, gender, and geographic regions. They also vary by benefit types, mental health, substance use. And they also vary by program code, so DAB, TANF, and Healthy Michigan. So, with those four categorizations of cells, there's over 130 distinct rates per member per month that we have to project. So, just as a background, the rates are developed by Milliman on behalf of the department, as you know, based on a combination of encounter submissions and Medicaid utilization and net cost reporting. So, and just a note here, we are expecting to get more detailed rates, hopefully within the next week or two, somewhere mid-August. So, then we apply the, the estimated Medicaid enrollment by those different cells and age groups, et cetera. So, we try to project where enrollment is going, and we apply those rates per cell to estimate a payment amount for next year. There are other Medicaid revenues as well that are reimbursed via waiver. So, for example, children's waiver, and that's reimbursed fee-for-service to us. S C D waiver, and that's the Serious Emotional Disturbances for Kids waiver, that's also reimbursed to us fee-for-service. And then the Habilitation Supports waiver, we receive a payment each month for each individual that we serve, and that's enrolled in that waiver. Those rates can vary depending on living arrangement for that, for the person served. I've included a, a chart. Again, this is from the dashboard, so this is visible to anyone who has access to the dashboards. And this is a high-level snapshot of enrollment in Oakland County. So, this one happens to be divided out or displayed by DAB, TANF, and Healthy Michigan. But remember, there's lots of subgroups that make up these grand total trend lines. So, you can kind of see, just to dig into the detail a little bit, the yellow line is DAB, and so that one's relatively flat. That typically doesn't change a lot from year to year. And then the Healthy Michigan line and the TANF line, those tend to change a little bit more as enrollment is a bit more fluid.
On that chart that there is, we, we have a, a data lag that we do see retro eligibility adjustments after the month. So, if you see there towards the end of the chart, you see a dip a little bit, but what will happen is as the months go on and people get retro, retroactive Medicaid, those will creep back up. So, what I talked a little bit about earlier was what we've been implementing over the last several years is service models. So, once we get a good six months to a year into a service model, we have some history in order to try to predict and determine what we look, think the next fiscal year will look like. Because when we walk into new service models, depending on how the service models were developed, a lot of it, the trends can change significantly with employment being a good example of that. We've seen significantly more community-based services, which in fact does pay a higher rate than facility-based services. So, we have to try to predict some of that going on and plan for that from a funding perspective. So, we take the time with each of the current service models to kind of think about where is that service model and its evolution of being implemented and being adjusted and things like that, and try to really plan for what do we think's going to happen next year? So, we could look at employment and say, "Okay, well, we now have nine months at the end of the fiscal year, we'll have nine months in of these new service models for employment, but what do we expect to change next year?" Well, we actually still do expect significant increases in the community-based services, so that's gonna pay a little higher rate than what we, than what we've seen in this fiscal year. So, we've seen that trend. We'll, we'll budget for that trend and make sure we're accounting for that as we go into fiscal year '19. So, that's just one example, but we really do that with all of the service models. Targeted Case Management is one of them. We've been talking to providers about the amount of therapy being provided in the Targeted Case Management Service Model and trying to encourage that. And so, we will hopefully plan for that to increase a bit, and hopefully, in the long run, has an impact on not only the person served outcome, but reduction in our hospital line item.
For service models that are being implemented in the next year, we have to approach it a bit differently because we don't have the historical payments to build a trend line from. So, we review the current year utilization. So, what are the services provided? Where are the triggers for payment? And we model payments based on, let's say, a current year utilization. And that allows us to project payment volume for FY '19. It's actually the way that we price the models to begin with, so we have all the data available, and we just project it forward into the next.
That's kind of us doing predictive analytics on the impact of service models and how the funding structure changes will be impacted over the next fiscal year and how we expect to see that play out through the next fiscal year. One example of that, oh, as I know, Annette has mentioned to you, that as we pull in these delegated fun, functions and contracts, administration at the provider level will change, and so we're working through the detail of that right now. But once those, once those decisions are finalized, those things will be incorporated into the budget going forward.
But we, we always benchmark the results of any of these analytics or projections against what we know is true, right? And so, for example, we'll compare the FY '9 projections versus prior year And so for example, we'll compare the FY9 projections versus prior year payments for reasonableness and for consistency with the strategic plan.
So other expenses that we take a look at, I mentioned provider administration. We look at the plan changes for OCHN administration in the upcoming year. I mentioned rent we will have in the next fiscal year, as well as depreciation for this building. We have things like unfunded mandates that we are expecting. And different trends we're seeing in crisis and acute care. We've seen an increase in that over the last couple of years, but we're seeing it. The payer mix has changed quite a bit for acute care. So we don't have Medicare covering as much as it has historically, which drives our hospitalization budget up. Also, as you heard earlier today, housing. We have a couple of new housing initiatives. Hence why we kind of talk about rolling that into the fiscal year 19 budget because it's a process we're going to go through anyway in building that will be to look at housing and what potential changes are in housing. We pay taxes and it seems like every year, the way we pay taxes changes. We've had claims and use tax. We've had QAP tax. We've had, they change it, I'm pretty sure, at least once a year, if not twice. And then there's usually some amount changes during the fiscal year as well. We are required to pay drawdown expense. So it's basically we're required to send the department money to draw down additional Medicaid funds. That's something that has happened for years and they finally recognized they had to put that in contract language because a lot of the PIHPs and CMHs were questioning, did we have to do it anymore because it wasn't written anywhere? But they did put that in there and it, I believe it draws down like about $75 million in Medicaid for the amount that we as CMHs contribute.
So that's kind of a high-level picture of how we prepare the budget, what we're thinking when we try to put the different revenue and expense elements together. There is a lot of detail. It's a very detailed process. So it does take some time. So, once we have a budget together, what's, we're looking forward. So going forward, managing to the budget. Well, first of all, we are expecting to get the rate certification letter sometime within, hopefully the next week or two. That'll give us more information on, or more precise estimate of next year's Medicaid revenue. After that, we'll be monitoring eligibility and enrollment trends throughout the year and adjusting our Medicaid revenue projections as needed, if needed. We also do quarterly reviews with the providers, the service providers. And we'll talk to them about how payments and expenses are lining up. And then we'll do budget amendments and present to the board as needed throughout the year.
Any questions? I think I'm a little overwhelmed thinking of all the work that goes into doing this annual plan. And I'm assuming you have staff that do, that follow all these projections and all the things you have to watch? And then do you have meetings then to sit down and talk about all these things and?
Yep, we do it. Not only does budget and finance monitor and manage all of that. I mean, I look at the financials. Patrick Staff looks at the financials. We work with the service networks. And then we sit down as a group in the cost utilization group that you've heard me talk about and talk about the bigger picture stuff, any significant trends. For example, we talked the other day about the hospital trend that we're seeing and what we might do as the larger group to try to talk to providers about that and see what's going on and what, if any, mitigation we can do related to that. So it gets looked at at a lot of different levels and then runs through the organization in the different areas so that we can make sure that we're monitoring and planning for any changes that we're seeing.
It's an amazing process. I'm very impressed that every year that I've been on the board, you get so close to pretty accurately determining this annual plan. So thank you for all your day-to-day intense work. Any other questions?
I'm sorry.
Makia?
I just had a question about the rate setting with McMillan.
Millman, yes.
Do they, what year are they basing our rates on now?
Well, so there's a couple of things that go on. So the rates that they just adjusted for the DAB issue. So those were just recently readjusted for the DAB issue. The geographic factor is the one that we've talked a little bit about that almost cost us several million dollars because it was, the data wasn't accurate. So that currently is at fiscal year 16, but they've given us until the, through the first quarter of fiscal year 19. And then they're going to take and look at it at fiscal year 17 and 18 combined. So they're updating it and I was happy to hear that they're going to update it for the last two years. So it's a better reflection of current trends going on. So if, as populations do shift and change, having it two years old doesn't really necessarily represent if something significant has changed.
Thank you. Anyone else? Jonathan?
A couple of questions. So the rates, do we think the rates might go up or do we think the rates may go down? Or do we think they're going to stay about the same?
Most recent rates that came out that ended up being for last quarter of fiscal year 18, bumped us up about $2 million a month. So as we go into fiscal year 19, we'll expect similar revenue with the expectation also of the DAB trend continuing. We've seen an increase in the Healthy Michigan trend that's been continuing. When they redo the geographic factor, so a couple of things will happen in fiscal year 19. There will be a 2.5% trending that they typically do when they implement new rates. And then the geographic factor that we end up with will very much be dependent on the data we get them. So we've been working hard. Jenny and her team have been working really hard to get, to make sure that we get the appropriate diagnoses for people, to make sure that we're getting credit, for lack of a better word, for the population we are serving. So based on the information we have at this point, the biggest issue that we were having was persons with ADD that were also duly diagnosed. And so the data that Jenny has run have each of those areas increasing as of right now. So we have to monitor and make sure of that. So I don't expect them to go down, it to go down based on that information.
Did I catch you correctly when you were saying that the numbers were trending up for, was that for the population, for DABS and TANFs? No?
DAB continues to drop. At some point, that's going to flatten out. And at some point, the way that that worked with, it's that people are hopping over to Healthy Michigan. People will start to get into, back into the full Medicaid after that four years at minimum because then they start, there start to be out-of-pocket costs and then people start to realize the impact for them of not being on full Medicaid. Whereas in the interim, it's not, it's not as much of a difference for someone that's being served because they don't obviously necessarily see the payment part of it. So we should at some point see that correction happen. When that will happen, it's going to depend on how long it takes for them to hit the four years and the out-of-pocket expenses start to go up.
Four years from HMP?
Right.
Is, not this fiscal year, it's probably fiscal '20, so October 2019.
So I would expect to see some swing in people starting to re-enroll in full Medicaid as that happens with the recognition that HMP is not really intended to be a long-term
Right.
coverage.
So the, I know the DABS are pretty level because, or they should be because you don't improve from blindness and age and deafness. Well, you could. But it is pretty level and it is even in the numbers you're showing. And if I ignore the last two or three months and the data you have here, it still looks like all of the other two, you know, so Healthy Michigan and for TANFs are trending down. And with the healthier economy, I would expect that to be the case. Maybe, and it looks like the numbers are trending at about 6% down. I mean, these pure numbers are 10, but I think the trend is much, it's much less than that, once you reconnect for the 34s.
It is much less. And if you account for the retro eligibility, we're estimating approximately 0.22 of a percent per month.
We do account for that every single month. There is a, there is a very detailed spreadsheet that monitors all of that. And then we adjust our revenue predictions based on that information.
0.22 being roughly in 12 months, 2.5%?
I'll check my calculator.
I won't hold you to the hard number. It's still, that still means we ultimately, by the end of the year, end up with that kind of percentage off our revenues.
Not necessarily because that was the adjustment recently that was done to the rates was to account for that. We will still see it to some degree. But we also do budget amendments. And if you recall, the last budget amendment, we did adjust Medicaid revenue in particular as we, as we, well, and prior to that, the first budget amendment, we adjusted Medicaid revenue to reflect that additional reduction we had seen in the DAB trend.
Oh. So I'm trying to get to is ISFs then. Do we think we're going to have to cut our spend this coming year? Because we're going to see a marginal, but a minor or marginal reduction in revenues potentially. So would we, to offset that, would we use ISF or do we just plan on not spending as much?
Oh, remember that there's a lot more going on in this than just revenue. It's not just DAB and Healthy Michigan. We also have autism revenue. So autism revenue went up significantly this fiscal year. And the last few years for autism, the regular Medicaid has had to supplement that. Well, autism revenue went up pretty significantly this year. It comes in as autism, but it doesn't mean we have to spend it that way. So that will offset some of the other Medicaid shortages that we have been using regular Medicaid to cover the last few years. So that's why we don't try to give too tight of numbers at this point. Because until we have the rate certification letters and can run it through the cell matrix, it's kind of a guessing game. So I don't expect it to be, to go down from this fiscal year at all because of the increases to the appropriations in general. So the autism appropriation went up almost $100 million. So between that, the SUD appropriation and the 2.5% trending that we expect to happen, I don't expect it to be less than what we have currently.
And I know in past years, you were saying that the ADA, it was whatever we, whatever we spent, we got, no matter what they had. This year, I know that they went to a cap plan, but it's a larger appropriation, at least as I understand it.
Well, appropriation goes up, did go up in all, in each of them, minimally in regular Medicaid, significantly in autism. So all of those things have an impact on the revenue we'll receive. So once we have the certification letters, it becomes far easier to predict numbers.
And that, and this is coming to my last question. So sort of like PA2 for substance use, ADA is restricted to Medicaid, but not specific, but not specifically just ADA. It can be used for anything, right?
I'm sorry, you mean ABA, autism revenue? Is that?
Oh, I, the, I know we get funding that's for substance use. It can only be used for substance use. The autism money that's coming in can only, it can be used for, it can only be used for Medicaid, but it's not limited to just autism or ADA services. It can be used for anything in Medicaid this year.
Part of the capitation payment, it comes in as autism, but does not have to be spent that way. Correct?
Thank you. That was pretty much it. Thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you so much. This is our second opportunity for public comment. Would anybody like to come forward? This is our opportunity for board comment. Jonathan?
Yes, I just wanted to congratulate Diana for making cranes. I saw that at my cranes this afternoon for women in technology. Very cool.
Meeting is adjourned.